Zoom in on me here. Not that I want to be that close.
Okay, turn your mic off real quick and then turn it back on.
Okay.
Okay, now try it.
Hey, oh yeah, that might do it. So I can put it behind me.
Just a little closer to, there you go. I can't get one.
Okay, and then I think we just gotta get a little bit lower, but I think it it suffices, I think. Yeah, that could work. All right. Oh, she's doing it. Oh, we got them all in there.
Oh, Carol, you're doing it.
Yeah, we're cooking with gasoline now. Oh, I know.
Yep.
In the spirit of football, that was an interception. Yeah, no, I think that works. I mean, they could see everything, so.
Okay.
All right.
All right, Vice Chair Ray, I think we need you for a quorum. We only have four of us here. All right, I'm gonna call the Kalamazoo County September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three Committee of the Whole to order. First on the agenda, a rule call, please.
Commissioner DeLu.
Here.
Commissioner Gisler is absent. Vice Chair Pro Tem Heffler is absent. Commissioner Mazur is absent. Commissioner Morales. Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strebs is absent. Chair Taylor.
Here.
And Commissioner Wheeler.
Here.
Five present.
Right, I did hear from Commissioner Mazur. She's not feeling well, so she won't be here this evening, and Commissioner Strebs will be here in about fifteen minutes. But next on the agenda, we have public comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the Board of Commissioners. Please give us your name and address, and you have up to three minutes. Thank you. See no citizens. Do you want to start the recordings?
Yes, Chair, Dana will get those started shortly. We have four recorded calls for the Committee of the Whole this meeting, this evening.
This is John Burhans. I would like this message read at both the four o'clock and seven o'clock meetings. I reside in Portage at sixty-eight thirty-eight Isabel. I continue to oppose the YWCA reproductive fund as money from our tax dollars may go towards abortions and gender transitions, which I believe is totally wrong and should not happen. I've spoken in person and called in multiple times, want to state that I continue to oppose. Thanks.
I'm Jeanette Robinsky calling from Kalamazoo County. Please play this message at both the four P M. and seven P M. Meetings of the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners on Tuesday, September nineteenth. As you move forward with the proposed twenty twenty-four budget and decide whether or not to modify it prior to its finalization, I would like to reiterate that I am deeply opposed to giving any money to the YWCA Reproductive Health Fund for the following reasons. First, life begins at conception. According to Dr. Stephen Christie, who is a physician, lawyer, and author, five thousand doctors at one thousand medical institutions were asked at what point life begins. A full ninety-six percent of them said that it begins at conception. Abortion deliberately kills those lives. As Sean Carney, President and CEO of the National Forty Days for Life Organization, points out, abortion is the only surgery where death is considered a success. Secondly, I am against artificial contraception for religious reasons. For those who want it, it's already available through the Kalamazoo County Department of Health Family Planning Program funded by Title ten dollars. For details, please see the agenda packet for your meeting held on June twenty, item twenty twenty-three dash six-two-one-four. There's no need to give the YWCA money to duplicate those services. Third, some proponents of gender affirming care say that it is comparable to menopausal women on hormone replacement therapy and comparable to women undergoing breast augmentation surgery. That's not a valid comparison for two reasons. First, those women are not trying to change their God-given birth gender. And secondly, they are not asking Kalamazoo County to foot the bill. Please do not give any money to the YWCA Reproductive Health Fund. Finally, please know that I am against the proposed property tax millage increase that you are going to discuss at the October third public hearing to support the twenty twenty-four budget. During the April eighteen meeting, you reported that the twenty twenty-three Kalamazoo County Equalization Report revealed that taxable value had increased six point eight percent. You already have extra tax revenue from that without having to raise the millage rate. Kindly stay within your means. Besides, the proposed twenty twenty-four budget is showing a surplus. So why do you need to increase the millage? If you want more of a cushion than you already have, then decrease your spending. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joyce Beatty. My husband and I live in the city of Kalamazoo, and we pay taxes. We do not want our tax money to go toward the willful killing of innocent human life, in other words, abortion. Our role as human beings in society is to nurture, protect, and affirm the dignity of every human being, not to willfully purposely end it when it seems inconvenient to someone. Nor do we want our tax money to go towards so-called gender-affirming care, which has proven to be very, very harmful to adolescents. Please replay this message at the four o'clock and the seven o'clock meetings, both on Tuesday, September nineteenth, and do not grant money toward Planned Parenthood or any other agency that would support these obnoxious decisions. Thanks. Bye.
Good afternoon. My name is Ann Cooper, and I live in Portage, Michigan. Please play my comments at both the four P M. and seven P M. Kalamazoo Board of Commissioners' meetings on September nineteenth. Today, I am calling to again express to you my very strong opposition to funding the YWCA reproductive health grant request under consideration for the twenty twenty-four budget. If funded, this program will spend a hundred thousand of our taxpayer dollars to pay for abortions and gender-affirming care. I would like to again remind you that our Declaration of Independence, so very dear to all USA citizens, states that we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. They are all endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. The YWCA reproductive health grant opposes our Declaration of Independence as it does not support life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness for all Americans of all ages. I would like to share with you the following tragic report. A twenty-one-year-old woman named Luca Hein is now suing the University of Nebraska Medical Center for irreversibly harming her by rushing her into a double mastectomy at age sixteen to treat her gender dysphoria without exploring less radical or permanent options first. As a teenager, she suffered mental health issues. In just two visits, doctors at the University of Nebraska Gender Clinic convinced her to accept breast removal as the solution to her mental health issues. Her parents were misled and pressured to agree. Evidence shows that affirming gender confusion carries serious harms itself and that more than eighty percent of children who experience gender dysphoria outgrow it on their own by late adolescence. Did Luca Hein benefit from gender-affirming care at age sixteen? The answer is clearly no. She was permanently harmed. Here is another concern. It is now known that physicians are being influenced by the financial benefits they can gain by doing gender care surgeries. At Vanderbilt University, a physician at their transgender health clinic was quoted stating that these surgeries make money. A new Tennessee law that forced Vanderbilt to stop transitioning minors has been passed to prevent this abuse. Please, Kalamazoo Board of Commissioners, concentrate on your legitimate responsibilities in serving our county and fund the services that all citizens truly need. Do not fund the YWCA Reproductive Health Fund grant. Do not use our dollars to support actions which lead to loss of life, mutilation, or chronic illness for our children and may ultimately be subjected to substantive claims of malpractice and litigation. I pray that you will carry out your responsibilities righteously for our county, our families, and our children. Thank you very much.
Sorry, is that that the last of it? Thank you, Vice Chair.
Yes, that is the last call. Thank you.
Okay, next we have the monthly financial report. Finance Director Post.
Good afternoon, Chair. Vice Chair. For Commissioners. Got a few things going on here. I apologize. Okay, would you like me to start with the monthly financial statement or the payroll dispersments?
Let's do the payroll and dispersments and the monthly financial.
Very well. That's why I was caught off guard. Okay. Okay. And accounts payable claims list totaling seven million nine hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-three thousand thirty-one cents is presented for review of this total, seven million eight hundred and fifty thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents. Payroll dispersments totaling two million four hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars ninety-three cents are presented for both September fifteenth payrolls.
Quick question, lake level fund, all those reimbursements to different people, that's that's the payment that we made. We're making payments to individuals as opposed to Texas Township.
So Chair, I believe those are actually payments from the the funding that was leveraged from the state with regard to Crook and Eagle Lakes. And then the bond that we went out for, those were refunds to those individuals before they bonded. I believe we bonded at one point nine million or something like that for the Crook and Eagle Lakes project. So that's those are refunds to the homeowners for the difference that.
So we got the check, the two point one million dollars from the state, not necessarily Texas Township.
Texas Township received the funding. So the so basically what happened is is that the Drain Commissioner, they started collecting. I'm trying to think of the terminology, but they started collecting the assessments from the property owners ahead of the bond issuance. Yeah, I'm trying to think of the terminology. I apologize. So before the bond issuance, because they needed to know how many would prepay before we actually bonded out. So because they started leveraging money from the state, they were able to refund a little bit of the portion from those that already had prepaid before we went out to bond the rest of the project.
So are we still at then the twelve percent? I know we went over the twelve percent with the, you know, the two point one million that was given to the from the state. You know, our share of that would have been about four hundred, three hundred and some four hundred thousand. Is so that that two point one million is reflected in in these payments then, correct?
That's correct. So the so our our fee did not go down at all. The Texas Township decided to utilize that funding for other drain projects that are related not to Crook and Eagle Lakes, but others that are already under the auspices of the Drain Commissioner. So we'll see, you know, some benefit through other projects in terms of a reduction per se. But for this specific project, they decided not to refund the county. That's correct.
Understand. Thank you very much. Any other questions from Commissioners? Thank you. Now we can go to the monthly financial report.
All right, so the monthly financial statement for August twenty twenty-three was shared with the board and kind of summarize in here just some highlights from that. Again, we break this report down by revenues and expenditures. We break it down by revenues by function as well as by source. So let's start with those two areas, if I may. Comparing the previous month of July to August report that we're talking about now, we can see the central service cost recovery generated an additional seven hundred thousand dollars. Tax revenue increased by about six point five million. The courts as a whole generated about three hundred thousand dollars in revenue, whereas the registered deeds generated about two hundred thousand. When we look at the revenues by source from the prior month, we can see taxes. We collected about four point four million dollars from the prior month. State grant revenue increased by one point six million. Charges for services increased by four hundred thousand approximately. Interest and rents increased by two hundred thousand, and other revenue increased by seven hundred thousand. When we look at the expenses, we break those also down by function. And again, function would be general government, judicial, public, safety, public works, the list goes on. And we also break those down by category. Reference in the category. You know, the through August, the goal is sixty-seven percent approximately is the target. And when we look at the expenses, we can see our personnel are sixty-three percent slightly below where they should be. Supplies is right on at sixty-seven percent. Other services and charges are sixty percent slightly below, whereas our transfers out are eighty-four percent, which would make sense because we're sending out full transfers not on a monthly basis. So that kind of summarizes my my analytics from August report. Welcome any questions from anybody?
Questions from Commissioners? Um, just a comment. Well, I guess it's a start with a question. Are we still, you know, the the transfers out, I'm not, I mean, those are one-time fixed costs predominantly, most of them. But the Personnel Services represent a majority of our expenditures. But the personnel services represent a majority of our expenditures. The four percent or so that we are under, three, four percent, you know, represents a significant dollar amount. You know, are we still on projection to be sort of under, under budget this year on our expenses, neighborhood of about two and a half, three million? Roughly.
And that's based on personnel?
I mean, I'm basing that on the personnel supplies, other services and charges. And I know you had worked on, which I thought was great, by the way, a sheet that looked at traditional expenditures as they went month by month. But are we still kind of on that same sort of trajectory?
Yeah, I mean, one, a percent, for example, when we look at the personnel services, that's less than a half million dollars. So each percent that, you know, that we're off, so if I see right now we're four, that tells me two million dollars approximately right away is what we would be under just for wages at this point in the year.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Commissioner DeLuca?
Yeah. Under Circuit Court budgeted restitution, seven hundred thousand, nothing has been spent. Can you tell me what that's?
Yeah, absolutely. This was a change requirement from Department of Treasury a few years ago. And restitution, if you think about it, what would happen is we would collect money court ordered by a judge as, and then we would pay that money out or vice versa. State of Michigan, we had a Gatsby pronouncement recently a few years ago that made us categorize that a little bit differently to show it as a revenue and expense. So theoretically, what comes in that account in revenue would go out as expenses. So there should never be a surplus or deficit between that expense and revenue account. So to answer your question in very simple terms, whatever will come in in terms of revenue will go out as an expense. So it's almost a wash if you want to view it that way.
Yeah, I asked that question too, and I saw it on the expense side of seven hundred thousand. I couldn't figure out or on the revenue side for seven hundred thousand, and then it's on the expense side of seven hundred thousand, and they're both zeros. So. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, we have our monthly investment report. Tyler.
Thank you, Chair. To report on the county's investment portfolio, as of August thirty-first, should have been sent to all of you in an email by administration. As of thirty-first, the county's investment portfolio has a par value balance of one hundred seventy-six million, two hundred ninety-seven thousand, twenty-six dollars and twenty-one cents as a market value of one hundred seventy-four million, eight hundred eighty-one thousand, two hundred forty-four dollars and forty-seven cents. So about a one-point-four million market value difference between the two. And during August, the portfolio earned six hundred forty-nine thousand, nine hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents on an average daily balance of one hundred seventy-one million, seven hundred forty-four thousand, six hundred seventy-seven dollars and one cent for an effective rate of return on the county's investments of four-point-four-six percent. For the year, the total portfolio has earned five million, three hundred twenty-four thousand, three hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. This includes amortization of investment premiums and discounts, of which two-point-three-six-nine million relates to general fund investments. So through eight months, we've outperformed our original budgeted investment amount by over one-point-three million and were well positioned through the end of the year. But if anyone has questions, I'd be happy to dig through this and elaborate.
Are there any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Gessler?
Thank you, Chair. Tyler, this has nothing to do with your presentation. It's just you know more about this sort of stuff than I do. Where, where interest rates going to go later this year? Are you going to be able to get to five percent at some point?
If I could answer that, I think I would be on Wall Street, sir. Now, in all seriousness, we do have some of our investments that are above five, but the way that a lot of these are layered, some of which CDs still at about three percent, one of which is actually maturing in a couple of days. And so we'll be able to turn that around, get in a different rate, lock in some of the higher interest. But we do have that laddered, so that way we'll try to get as much of this during the high season. And if things start to fall off into next year, we do want to capture as much gain as we can.
Thank you.
Of course. Any other questions from Commissioners? Tyler, I just want to say thank you very much. Compared to last year at this time, you know, we were, the previous board wasn't getting these reports in a timely manner. And then when we did get the end of the year, it was at a one-point-one million on our seven hundred and, a hundred and eighty million dollars invested. We're well over five and a half million dollars now. And I think that's just a great testament to not only you, but I also want to thank your predecessor, Ms. Balkam as well, who has helped out a lot. And I think it's a team effort and really shows that we have put the county in a much better financial position with our investment income than we have in the past. And so thank you.
No, thank you. And if I could give that same shout out again to Housing Director Balkama for the institutional knowledge with that. It's been a great help. Of course, Treasurer Whitner, my deputy, Patrick Farmer. Without their support, none of this would have come together the way it is. So thank you and thanks to them.
Thank you.
All right, next on, we have our two thousand twenty-four budget revenue and expenditure discussion. And I'm going to allow Administrator Kevin Callan to lead us off.
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair, Vice Chair, Pro Tem Commissioners, audience. Not much to really update you all on today. However, I did slightly amend the Minister's recommendation that was reviewed two weeks ago as we trued up some numbers with regard to internal communications. And that encompasses the phones, the IT equipment, things of that sort. If you look at page or slide nineteen, where we disclosed the operational initiatives, that number went down from three hundred and three thousand to two hundred and thirty-two thousand. So that created an additional surplus and really thank goodness it did because there were some things that we had to adjust based on truing up some of the recommendations with regard to court security deputies. So you'll notice on slide eighteen, there's funding that's included for the court security deputies. Currently, what's occurring at the Gold Road Justice Complex is that we have a contractor that performs the security duties over at Gold Road. Circuit Court would like to instead work the sheriff's office to have qualified M. Cole sworn deputies there that work on a part-time basis to fulfill those duties. We also underwent a state audit for the Animal Services and Enforcement Department where they came in, they do an annual audit, and they informed us that we need another kennel technician. So we have plugged in some funding for that, still keeping that, that total number there at one-point-two-nine-nine million. We also increased the Sheriff's Office provisions account as those costs continue to increase. And then we made some slight adjustments to the Human Resources Department for two FTEs and a one FTE executive coordinator, sort of anticipating some just changes in regard to with all the positions, employee engagement. So you're hiring, your retention, recruitment, and succession planning. So, so we made a slight adjustment to that. None of the surplus as presented from two weeks ago to today has changed in terms of the general fund surplus. That still remains the same number. We just made some slight modifications. And with regard to how we program those dollars and for those priorities and initiatives. Happy to take any questions on the revenue side and expenditure side or this presentation in its totality.
Questions from Commissioners? Vice Chair Pro Tem Epler?
Thank you. Their indications were that they want to get a certified, M. Cole certified officer out at the Gold Road complex. So the sheriff's going to probably have to take another person off the road to accomplish that.
So Vice Chair Pro Tem Epler, my understanding is that these would be part-time deputies that are M. Cole certified, likely those that have retired recently. So they wouldn't take away from deputies that are already sworn on staff now. It would, the idea would be to utilize those that have retired from service.
Okay, yeah, I know we're concerned because we're, we put two resource officers in the school, which is going to short his road staff already. And so I guess it was just a concern and that that would be good. No, I think it's warranted. I just am concerned about is already short staffing is all along enforcement faces short staffing in this day and age. Thank you.
Questions from Commissioners? Well, I will just go through this kind of on the revenue side. I, I'm kind of, this is kind of my thought, and we talked a little bit about it at our leadership meeting, that this meeting would incorporate, one, the revenue, we'd focus on the revenue. The expenditures we'd save for the following meeting, with the exception of the, what Commissioners wanted to do with the one-time funding requests from our ARPA, the inspirational projects. Whether, and I see Administrator and Deputy Administrator have up there the, kind of the four or five main things that have been talked about, about Commissioners. Kevin, do you kind of want to take this over or I do, I was thinking we could put dollar amounts next to each one of those. So Commissioners, when they did vote, they would have sort of an opportunity. I also kind of wanted, before we, before we get to that, I wanted, there was two small adjustments that I wanted to do with the revenue side that I think can free up some money. One, if we, Commissioner Strebs, I think you had talked about moving some body camera stuff from the, the operational side or to, to the CIP requests. I'm certainly in favor of that. Also, I would like to see, we have a four percent growth rate suggested. I like to, I think we, four-point-five percent is more appropriate. That's what Kent County is doing. That's what Van Buren County is doing. I think Aligan is going to probably do five. We received as, was sent a phone call earlier, six-point-eight percent growth last year in equalization. I think we're going to get over five percent next year. I really do. I don't think it's prudent to budget five percent. I think that having that little bit of a safety net allows us to some of the flexibility and capital. But I do think going up from four to four and a half percent is prudent and would be good fiscal kind of guidance by the county, a good fiduciary responsibility of taxpayer dollars to come a little closer to that more accurately predicting what our true growth rate will be so that we can expend those dollars for services. But what do Commissioners think before we, that, and then I also wanted to talk a little bit about the investment income to a much smaller extent. But what do Commissioners think about going from four to a four and a half percent? We've never traditionally budgeted, budgeted over three percent at the county, going back several years I've looked at. Whereas our equalization reports were always over four and a half, five percent. So that's one of the reasons and one of the, how we've generated such large reserves. So I think adjusting that to four and a half percent makes more sense. It gives the county administrator and his staff a little bit more flexibility in that budget. That extra half percent would generate, if we've got about sixty-one million dollars or so in taxes, that extra half percent would generate about three hundred and ten, three hundred and twenty thousand of ongoing operational dollars that he, I think that him and his staff could see fit to use in the best appropriate manner. Oh, I've talked enough. I want to hear from you guys. What do Commissioners think about the four to four and a half percent? Commissioner Gessler?
Thank you, Chair. I think this goes right along with the budgeting eighty percent of the total salaries for the employees that we talked about last meeting. It's, it never is going to be too much beyond that or short of it. And this is just, I think, getting us back to a point of where fiscal responsibility doesn't mean fiscal silliness. And maybe that's where we've been in the past, just so conservative that by saying that, I'm sure we're going to get stung, but on the other hand, I think it makes an appropriate change. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Strebs?
Thank you, Chair. I'm in agreement as well. Putting the, the tax resources into action in the community is how to leverage the taxpayers' investment and get them the services they need. So I think it's prudent that we, you know, be a little more realistic with our projections and that also we'd be prepared to have, you know, discussions about budget adjustment if we see returns well over four-point-five that we think about how to, you know, take action with the resources rather than just sticking it in the painting.
I agree. And to give Administration a little credit on this, he and his staff to create a one-time funding resource, I call it the golden, you call it the golden rule or what, golden ratio, that's what it is. But I think that does a good job of addressing some of those new one-time monies. Now, I do think we need to be proactive when we realize those one-time dollars and not, you know, wait years for trends, but, but, but be able to jump on that and be able to react quickly. So I think that's, it puts us in a good position to do that. Any other comments on the four to four and a half percent? Okay, I, two in favor and nobody against, so. It's unanimous. Okay, the other I wanted to talk about was the investment revenue. And this is probably a little bit more tricky than the four and a, four and a half. I think the four and a half percent makes a lot of sense. Going from two million in anticipated revenue to two-point-two million in anticipated revenue. Now, I'm kind of torn on the two different sides of it. Last year, we recommended nine hundred thousand. We didn't, or two years ago, we got nine hundred thousand after mark-to-market. There was even a loss. We weren't, we weren't performing well with our investments, previous couple of years. I think it's safe to say that. I think now we are performing very well. We are getting, you know, well over four and a half percent, or four-point-four-six percent this, this cycle. We're at two-point-three million return to the general fund through August. That's eight out of twelve months, sixty-seven percent. We're going to probably receive more than three, three and a half million dollars to the general fund this year alone. I think we're going to get that next year. I don't think we should budget three and a half million or three million to, out of general fund dollars because interest rates aren't going to stay at five and a half, five percent forever. And ongoing operational costs, those dollars, most of those dollars should be utilized for one-time expenditures, capital purchases, things that aren't going to affect us years down the road. But going from two million to two-point-two also gives Administration a little more flexibility. Perhaps maybe even putting those dollars or some of those dollars in contingency just to realize that, that we are making more revenue on our investment side. And again, leveraging taxpayer dollars. Going from two to two-point-two is not a huge change, but it is more of a philosophical change from four to four and a half in that these are dependent strictly on interest rates. Now, as interest rates go down, we're going to see mark-to-market reports that will show large revenue or income that won't be realized, that won't be real, just like we're seeing large mark-to-market reports that show declines. They aren't so, so and so, unless you absolutely need cash equity, they aren't real. They, they are just represent a cash basis. So I think we can get, if we get to two-point-two, if interest rates drop from five and a half, as Commissioner Gessler's question, down to four, three and a half, we'll be okay for at least a year, year and a half, in that we'll be locked into a lot of those higher rates. And then we may have to adjust that down in subsequent budget years. But in this year, I think it's prudent and it makes sense to go to two to two-point-two. But again, I want to hear Commissioners' thoughts because I don't want to be the only one talking all the time. Commissioners, Commissioner Gessler?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, just as we're now, as Tyler indicated, locked into some CDs that are, the latter therefore doesn't get them up to five yet. It'll happen in the future. And at that point, when that's the floor of those laddered CDs, you know, we're, even if the market takes a dive, we're going to be locked in. And it, I agree with you completely. It makes good sense. And just as we're behind the eight ball a little bit now, living with those CDs, we'll be ahead of the game because the CDs will still be moving upward while we're watching everything else turn around a little bit. Thank you.
Correct. It'll buy us a year, year and a half. I completely agree. Commissioner Strebs?
It's like, you know, ring around the rosie here with us. Um, but so I, you know, I just wanted to know in the investment report, we do have some investments that are coming to term, one tomorrow, being our largest single investment pool of ninety-four million dollars. So we're going to, at that time, take one of the largest So we're going to, at that time, take one of the largest pots of investment funds and we're going to move it into an investment strategy now during high interest yield. So that's a very strong position for us. I mean, I I think we're still being quite conservative, looking at 2.2 for our returns. So again, you know, I just, I want to be mindful about what we are actually realizing as we move forward and be prepared to be strategic and and tackle issues in this community. You know, we have a housing millage, but our our community is adamant that we need more solutions. We have gun violence crisis. We have a number of things on our docket that are very important. So we're going to see, you know, I think, strong performance in the portfolio because we have a lot of money about to move.
I I agree, Commissioner Strevs, and I probably would have been more aggressive in my my take had that golden ratio not been provided by administration because that allows unforeseen one-time monies to be delegated in a structured sort of manner. So. Any other commissioners? Well, again, we got two or three, I guess, myself to zero or nobody opposed. So. Okay, four. So I guess now we're going to kind of, and I'm going to let administration kind of take this over on the aspirational dollars. If you kind of want to go through the Kevin, just kind of what we've got and sort of what have, what has been proposed kind of by commissioners?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So commissioners, what we wanted to do was sort of walk through that, the part of the recommendation that leverages ARPA dollars and kind of garner, in a sense, the board's feedback in regards to some of the transformational projects you all had talked about too. So if you recall, currently, the ARPA balance that we're sitting at as we reallocated revenue from a contract that we have with Guide House, who's our ARPA consultant. That was about a $900,000 move there. So you all have 1.36 million to reallocate for these community transformational projects. We leveraged in the administrative recommendation and suggested how some of those dollars could be spent. However, it's the total desire of the board to allocate that funding as you see fit. So on slide 20, there's, there are some projects in there that leverage ARPA dollars. So that's a corporate Corporation Council matter management system. We have a planning and development countywide infrastructure plan. There's some, some thought behind leveraging some dollars to plan around recruitment, retention, the prosecutor's office. Leveraged some funding for body worn cameras, kind of continued the recruitment and retention incentives for the sheriff's office. If you recall, that's our, it's an established ARPA project now. And then it also funded some police academy support programming. So that would have taken 880,000 from the 1.36 million dollar number. However, again, this was just a suggestion and you all can decide how you'd like to allocate that. There's also L A T C F funding available and the amount of $100,000 that we suggested and recommended that the Veteran Service Office received that to support their food vouchers program. As you know, that's been a tremendous need and it's been highly successful program. The need is still great in there. So we suggested that it go there. But what we wanted to do and we can have Deputy Administrator Cole kind of lead this process was kind of decide among that that bucket of money, the 1.36 million dollar number, how the board would like to allocate that funding for these transformative community projects that we had discussed or any other projects that might come up tonight. So those are your employee emergency relief fund pilot program for that, that Commissioner Morales has championed. Vice Chair Reyes championed a foreclosure assistance fund. As you know, City of Calma Zoo has a program like that for just city residents. There's a better engagement pilot program that we've been sort of discussing internally with Chair Taylor and Commissioner Strebs. The TRICARE Child Care Assistance Program, a pilot program that's been championed. And then also, lastly, but certainly not least, State Medical Bill Relief Program that's been championed by Vice Chair Ray, Commissioner Strebs. And that's a program that may have some state matching dollars from too. So with that pot of money, we'd like to kind of know how we would like the 1.36 million dollars to be sort of split up here to address some of these. And also just kind of reminding the board, if you remember and recall back to our budget retreat, just keep in mind that these pilot programs, although they're pilot, they're going to take a lot of bandwidth and capacity from staff to to stand up and assure their success. So if you recall, Ashley Kleckke, our our facilitator, kind of mentioned, sort of, I almost coined the term this golden ratio is really one to two projects. Because if you, as you know, we're working on a lot of other very, very important projects, gun violence, opioid. They're taking a lot of resources, a lot of staff time. So there's, there's just so much that we can do and so much that we can accomplish. And we want to make sure that the one to two projects that we do are successful and make an impact instead of just kind of not, you know, kind of making a splash in a in a pond. So we want to make sure we 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 give it our best. But I will let Deputy Administrator Cole kind of take us through how we like this portion of the meeting to go and then we'll kind of go from there.
Um, quick question, bitter engagement. That's not a expenditure, is it?
It it can be. So for instance, in order to do the engagement, that might be a potential position, could be hosting activities, special learning sessions, trainings, things of that nature.
I I, the way I would envisioned, and we'll be talking about responsible bitter policy later in the meeting. But I I envisioned it only being a potential expenditure of if at F at all. It would be an increase if we were to have some sort of planned building going on. We don't have any, do we? I mean, the parking garage, but that's going to primarily be the city or is that going to be us? Yeah, I, as far as expenditure of dollars, I don't know. Those first one, two, three, four, I think, make a lot of sense. But as far as bitter engagement, we, there's no way that I could put a dollar amount on that. I mean, Commissioner Strevs, you you and I have been working on that. Do you know of any?
Well, I I just, I mean, maybe we can get into this a little bit more when we talk through the bitter policy. But if a priority of revisions to the bitter policy will be expanding equitable access to contracting with the county, then really to engage in that in an effective way, we need to bring vendors to the table who have have difficulty participating in the process, really hear from them about what the roadblocks are and ensure that our policy is working on tackling that in a meaningful way because we could put forth a policy that intends to do it, but does not really you know, create the outcomes that we want. So I think there is some need. I don't know how extensive this needs to be, but I do think we need to engage to really hone the policy in an effective way.
I guess before we get, do you know, because everything else up there, I've got a pretty good firm idea of what that's going to cost us in one-time money. Do you, do you feel comfortable in putting a number up? And I mean, are you thinking that this process is going to take a position? I was more under the assumption that it would be internal within, you know, commissioners and administration. And we'd come up with a sort of a new policy and then the enforcement practice of that would be on the building authority. You know, that's currently underutilized, but the building authority would have, are you thinking of a position for this, either Deputy Administrator Cole or?
So that was a thought in terms about the enforcement side of it. Yeah, that could be a position. A lot of other communities actually have an enforcement position to go out onto those job sites to ensure that participation is real.
Okay, then would it be safe to assume? Because just for budgetary practices, I hate to, would it be safe to assume to put $100,000 on that number? And that would be a good sort of ballpark earmark. I hate to do that, but.
I I would feel comfortable with 50,000 to kind of just start.
Okay, 50,000. That that makes a lot more sense to me. Okay, cool. And real quick, before we do that, there was some talk, Commissioner Strevs, of potentially moving. Basically, the the there's 1.36 million in ARPA. Administrator's recommendations of that use is 880,800 from the ARPA portion of it, of which $130,000 is for body worn cameras for correction officers. And I kind of agreed with your comment that you made, and I think it was an email or something I'd read, but that that should mostly be through CIP as opposed to one-time dollars. I I certainly wouldn't have a problem moving that $130 for body worn cameras for correction officers from the this to the CIP portion, and that would free up $130,000 of ARPA so that we could do more transformational stuff. Does that make sense to people? Okay, well, let's move that 130,000 from body worn cameras to correction officers. Now, the other yeah, let's just do that for now. That makes sense. Vice Chair Ray.
Thank you, Chair. I was just wondering, how much have we already given to the sheriff's office from the ARPA dollars? And then I also heard you say that we're already supporting the recruitment retention program. Is that working currently or like, how's that going?
Yes, Vice Chair Ray. So we have, if you just give me one moment here, we have given or allocated to the sheriff's office appears a total of so $500,000 for their retention incentives. So those are for current deputies that are on staff. That program is ongoing. So they've they've administered that. We also then gave a recruitment incentive of granted through ARPA, $385,000. And I believe that's a $10,000 signing bonus. So they, when they sign in in our accepted into the academy, I believe they they received that $5,000. And then I believe it's after a year of service, they get the other half. So it's something like that. And then we also gave them $177,000 to purchase three new sheriff's patrol vehicles through ARPA. And then that was all the funding that we that we granted through our, the ARPA process. I hope that answers your question.
That's just one follow-up question. I feel like we're already supporting the police academy thing that they're doing in the sheriff's office as well.
Yes, so we currently do that. So for the 2023 budget, they do have funding to support police academy. But this would be additional funding to support the police academy expenses for additional recruits that they hire. So every year, those those costs are just ongoing. As they hire, they have to send folks to the academy. Some other jurisdictions, it's not really typical at all. It's actually very uncommon now with the the hiring complications of law enforcement. But there are probably a few jurisdictions that require the applicant to pay for their own academy. But you really start limiting your pool when the applicant has to pay for their own academy. So expenses.
Okay, so we're already supporting it at what amount?
If you stand by for just a moment, I will look it up.
And I think it's also important to know, oh, sorry, Commissioner Morales.
Thank you, Chair. So was that in the ARPA funding that you just mentioned, was that for the opioid? Was that, was that money included as well for the this bodies? Was it a body scanner that they wanted? Is that inclusive into that as well?
No, so that that's a totally separate fund. That's opioid. That's already been purchased. Yeah, so that's separate funding from ARPA. So opioid funding is totally.
Right, but I'm saying as a whole, are you, are you looking at that cost as well or just our costs?
And Commissioner Wheeler?
Sorry, thank you. Administrator, do you know if the retention bonuses have been given to the officers? Because I've talked to a few who I haven't talked to them lately, but I feel like they haven't gotten them yet.
So the retention bonus, I know that I approved the the language for the the program. I I'm not certain that they've actually doled out that that funding yet, but I know it's 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 coming. So the sheriff will be here. Oh, he's actually here. Actually, I guess he can, I didn't know he was here already. Chair, if you wouldn't mind. So the reason no one's received it yet is that the plan was they never were going to until November. We've explained that several times and we put out some emails. But bottom line is, it's going to be in November and it's a metered process. It depends on how long you've been there, is how much you'll get. And this way, everyone was there at least two years. And that was a, an idea that we had just to make sure that we were able to retain them.
Thank you.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray?
Excuse me, just a follow-up question. So if they're not getting the, currently, we're already supporting it at $885,000. There's another request for an additional $200,000. If they're not getting until November, like what is this additional $200,000 supporting as relates to retention?
So some of that's for jail nurses. We have positions for six. We're down to two. So that's one of the things that we're working on as well. And ultimately, some of the bonuses did go out to people that came in to the sheriff's office. So there was different tiers of the bonuses. And they were going to be vetted or sent out at different times according to the positions, how long somebody's been there. Part of it was that there is a $10,000 hiring and that part was $5,000 upfront during hiring. Then we were sending them to the academies, which we paid for. And then we were also paying them to be at the academies. That's really the only way you're going to find police officers right now. And then after that, they receive a, another $5,000 in that total $10,000 package. Once they've been there for the full length of the FTO program, the academy and the end of their probation.
Thank you. Is this helping fill positions?
It has helped some, yes. Sadly, though, what I'll tell you is, once we went to 10,000, I started getting phone calls from other agencies. And they up there is to 15,000. And sometimes we're finding where it's a, you know, we're talking to somebody and they say, well, can you do any better? They're getting 15,000 over there and they're able to hire at the same level somebody was. So say somebody was four years, five years in one agency and they were making, I don't know, whatever the dollar would be, I'd say $70,000. We would be asked by them, can you bring me in at the 70? Because I don't want to go down, but I do want to work for you. Our current contract doesn't allow that. And so what we're finding is they're going to agencies that recognize their years of service and then paying them the $15,000 and then bringing them in at roughly $80,000 a year.
Can't you do a C or a D step with administrative when you get these new?
So we're working through our C CBA and also with administration, I can tell you that it's an everyday process. It changes honestly weekly and monthly. You know, when we start seeing a few people come in because they they want to be part of this team, then sometimes they're there for a little while and then they go to another agency that's now paying a $15,000 bonus. We've not lost anybody, though. I can say that. We've not lost anybody that has signed on for our $10,000 sign-on bonus to another agency. Once they've got there. Where we're losing them is at the front end where somebody else is paying them to come in with their four years experience, bringing them in at a higher level, starting them at 70. When they finish their program, they get their 15,000 and they're getting $80,000 a year. And that's here in this county. But it's not at the county sheriff's office.
I guess my question is, you know, with the new Siegel steps, if somebody came in with like seven years experience, would there not be a step that would match their their thing? And that would probably take what HR approval or board approval or whatnot after C?
It does. And I'll remind you guys, we had a case where I did receive board approval. I did have the administrator's approval as requested. And then the union had not liked that we had done that. And so that person who had been there well over a year had to pay back all the extra that they had made. And they had to, basically, they were paid, they paid a penalty because the union did grieve the fact that we brought that person in, which was a difficult situation because we followed the procedures, but it didn't fit the way the CBA read.
Okay, thank you for that. Appreciate it. That makes sense. Any other questions? Any other questions, Administrator Catlin?
Sorry, I just wanted to answer Vice Chair Ray's question. So it's five hundred and seventy nine thousand, kind of recognizing. So what's what's before the board for the academy support is actually half. If you go to the new funding request for the Sheriff's Office, he actually requested double what is recommended in the budget now through ARPA, but it's five hundred and seventy nine thousand, six hundred dollars for twenty twenty three. That's correct for twenty twenty four, yeah.
Thank you. So I have questions about a couple of other things off the Sheriff's Office. The matter management system for Angelina, is that the same request for CIP or is this, are we moving it from CIP?
So when it came in through CIP, there it was at a point in time. So right now, we have three potential companies we're looking at with three different levels of pricing. And so the higher level is what is represented in in the budget, the lower levels was what is represented in CIP. Yeah, we can absolutely move it from CIP and put it in in the budget. Yeah. Yeah, but Corporation Council will answer any direct questions about her requested software.
Thank you. I just had a quick thing I wanted to input on the matter management system. So the CIP, my request that was made there is initially for the first year in implementation and migration and getting the system running. So currently, in what I'm looking at, that's approximately twenty four thousand dollars for the first year. And then as part of a budget request, it's ongoing annual expenditure to keep, maintain, and have licensure and the various functionality within that system, which is looking about ten to eleven thousand dollars annually. So there is an ongoing cost that goes with the matter management system, but when I made the CIP request, it was more for the infrastructure and the development.
So what is the thirty six thousand dollar request from the ARPA dollars for?
So the ARPA dollars are more, as Angelina explained, it's it's really for the startup costs. So that fifteen thousand in CIP is is obviously low. And so it's at a point in time, and we're we're trying to 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 gather quotes, you know, but then we're up against timelines for budget process. So these are all kind of numbers that really are guestimates until we can get concrete quotes. So we're trying to leverage funding in both categories to ensure we have enough for the startup costs to get the system in place, and then we'll have a budget, an operating budget in place to support the ongoing maintenance of the system.
I've got a quick question. So we just, we know, but you know, kind of the consent of the board, it wasn't a vote or anything, but the consent of the board to go to four to four and a half and the two of the two point two, that's about an additional five hundred and fifty to six hundred thousand roughly of revenue, maybe a touch more. Could we move the Corporation Council Matter Management System, since it seems to be an ongoing operational cost? Move that to the operational side of the budget, so we're not taking it out of ARPA? Because I think that was kind of the spirit of what you were asking. Why are we? Yeah, I think that makes that makes more sense. So we've taken the sheriff body worn cameras basically the hundred and thirty thousand and moved that to CIP. And then we've taken the thirty six thousand from Corporation Council manage managed the matter management system, and we can move that into the operational budget. So it's not a one time. It can be ongoing with the operational costs of that. So that would free up an additional hundred and sixty six thousand on top of the four eighty. So we've got five eighty, six hundred and forty six thousand dollars roughly, not counting the two point four or five million of unrestricted reserves, which I don't think we should go into the full two point four or five million. But I'm certainly amenable to put four hundred and fifty thousand in that to get that over a one point one million dollar number that we can then take to that board. And yeah, check my math, because should see, watch, we should watch me deal in poker. So yeah, we could put ten thousand dollar appropriation for me to go to the World Series of Poker Championship. But but then I think that puts us at about around roughly a one point one number that I think Deputy Administrator Cole was, you know, coming through that we could do the aspirational piece and see where commissioners are, because that'll give them a lot of direction on how to put together the budget. Kevin, do you have something to add or? Okay, Commissioners? Commissioner Straps?
I know, I guess the the plan is we're gonna have additional discussion on expenditures in our next board session, because I think looking through some of the items on CIP, I mean, they we've really approved every request all the way down to priority twenty in departments, some that scored very low in the scoring matrix. I think that we have some room there as well to make some adjustments within the CIP recommendations. So I'll just lift that up generally, and we can talk in more specifics at the next time, if that's the the preference. So the to clarify, so we've talked through the funding support for Police Academy for that, the additional two eighty nine, the recruitment and retention incentives, the two hundred thousand. So I make sure I'm understanding that. That's again, sheriff lifted up. It is for nursing staff, for road patrol, et cetera. I see him shaking his head there. So thank you for that. The prosecuting attorney, what is the recruitment and retention incentive that one fifty? What would that look like? What's the the strategy we're planning to deploy with those resources?
Thanks for the question, Commissioner Straps. So we're still in consultation and discussions with the prosecutor's office on that. There are some thought process behind, you know, just the difficulty in hiring these these prosecuting attorneys assistant, these APAs in in how that program would be formulated. So that would be a program that would likely touch the APA ones through threes and likely even have some thought in there for the the legal aids, legal assistance. This is something that we're still working through. We don't know what that program looks like yet. There's just some funding that we just kind of thought that could be leveraged for that, sort of also recognizing that obviously those aren't the only attorneys in the county, just like the jail nurses aren't the only nurses in the county. So administration is still working behind the scenes with finance and HR on a more comprehensive review for the entire county, not just these two specific offices, but we recognize the more the urgency with regard to the caseloads that aren't being addressed, because there's just not enough bandwidth there to address the caseloads at the prosecutor's office and and sort of detailing some some incentives for recruiting the law enforcement officials to get out there and patrol and patrol the the roads and 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 our individuals that are lodged at the jail too. So for the prosecutor's office, that's what we're looking at. We still don't know what the program looks like, but we're we're in ongoing discussions with prosecutor's office on that.
Thank you. And then another item on here, the L A T C F funding. We will have before voters of veterans' millage. And so I want to understand the timing of those, the resources that we're expected to generate. Should the community support that millage? And what other potential funding or what other uses are available for the lack of funding? As potentials.
Yeah, that's an excellent question. So that's something that we thought of as well. So the board could, you know, tentatively approve, I would say, do a tentative approval on L A T C F. Also, doesn't that funding does not have to be approved as part of the budget package at all. We have plenty of time to allocate that. So just really on here as a discussion, we can certainly wait till after the November election, and then the board can reallocate this hundred thousand dollars as they see fit. So certainly doesn't need to be approved at this point as part of the entire twenty twenty four budget process.
Mr. Dillam?
Yeah, in reference to that, Commissioner Straps, I just had a meeting last week with the veterans and it's quite the opposite of they actually need that money ASAP. They're gonna run out by November. It's it's my opinion that the the millage will pass, but they won't see those dollars till way late next year. In fact, I don't know when was the appropriate time to bring it up, but they're actually wondering how soon, if we could approve it, that that they would get this money, because they need it by November, not and certainly don't want to wait till after the the election. So and I'm a strong advocate of doing this for them.
Administrator Catlin, you look like you.
I, yeah, so I just wanted to clarify. So I'm glad that you brought that up. So the way that we that we budget, so if the millage passes, we already know that the funds will be collected on winter taxes actually this year. So we would have the budget in place. Veterans Affairs, the Veteran Service Office would be able to function as if they have, that that's why we have cash flow, right? So they would be able to function as if they will be receiving this million plus dollars. So they would have that budget they could operate on, knowing that we would collect it throughout the year, just like we do with our property taxes now. So they would be able to function knowing in November, come January first, that they can function with that, with that, with those millish dollars until we end up collecting it. So basically, what you see is that we have pooled funds or or pooled cash rather. And so we usually subsidize a lot of the operations until funding is collected. So they they should be just all right. In terms of their November, you're absolutely correct. We have heard that they believe they'll kind of run out of money sometime in November. But again, L A T C F could be leveraged to to get them through the end of this year, and then we could utilize their budget if the millage passes to get them through twenty twenty four and beyond.
Well, again, I just hate to see this money allocated towards, I I mean, I guess I'm looking for the promise for them, actually.
Yeah, I I thank you for the confirmation, Kevin. I suspected that we basically, yeah, we'd we'd front on the money and they'd operate, you know, they'd get most of it towards the end of the year. I think we've only collected some certain percentage of our taxes so far. So they wouldn't get it to the end of the year, but we'd we'd front on the money and they'd act as if. Vice Chair Ray?
Thank you, Chair. Just a question. Maybe we can find out like what they need to get them through November, December. Thank you.
Vice Chair Protime Peppler?
Thank you, Chair. If there if this would be sort of a loan type thing is what you're talking about, but will they have adequate funds to get them into next year? And if such, are they gonna be shortfall in next year's budget? Having to put pay back what, in essence, are are we looking at a budget that's gonna be strong enough to get the job done, so to speak? Because I concur with Commissioner Lou that you know, we need to take care of our veterans. They've taken care of us for many years. So I guess I want to make sure that the millage and or, you know, funding is appropriate to get them through. Thank you.
I think what I'm hearing from Commissioners Administration, and correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioners, but Vice Chair Ray's question is, you know, what what do we need for November and December to get us through this year? Next year, they're going to be operating under their millage dollars. They'll be borrowing from us for a short period of time until they start collecting. But they'll be operating under the millage dollars. They won't need it. I'm not sure that the full hundred thousand is needed for November and December, but a portion of it probably is. Kevin, Minister?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm gonna have Deputy Administrator Warner. I I have the information, but I can't find it, and she probably has it readily available. So I'll have her opine on that.
And actually, I think something must be happening without look, because I also could not find it. So we are estimating, and that's why I have the health officer here just to confirm. So they're asking for a hundred thousand, because there was that question of, you know, when will, if the millage passes, when will they see that money coming in? So hearing that update from Administrator Catlin's very helpful. What we're estimating, I believe, and I have the health officer here to confirm, is that in November, they're looking like to get through the end of the year, it's about a twenty thousand dollars that they're gonna need. Of course, that's an estimate at this point in time. They're they're basing that off of what they're seeing, what they're averaging per month, and also knowing that October, November, December generally tends to have a quite a bit uptick. So it may not be as much as twenty thousand, but that is the estimate that they have at this point in time. I'll turn it over to health officer.
So we do anticipate in what we've encountered, particularly over the last year, year and a half, with the veterans program is a significant increase in in need, particularly with food vouchers, housing issues, heat issues. And and we've always, you know, we've we've been able, thankfully, for our, from our perspective, we've been able to help supplement to get them through. You know, I've asked both the finance team and leadership within the veterans program to develop two budgets basically for twenty twenty four. One incorporating hopefully a millage approval, and one incorporating not getting a millage approved. If if it's the former, then great, we're moving forward. We'll have some discussions hopefully about what the county currently provides in terms of funding to the program. If it's the latter, in terms of, you know, the 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 millage not being approved, then we'll recognize some some, you know, continued significant shortfalls. The program is just not funded and hasn't historically been funded at the level that it needs to. We've we've again encountered significant increases, and and those are only going to continue as as more and more, you know, veterans age into, you know, senior years and and more need is encountered.
We certainly need it spiked dramatically after an advertising campaign, correct?
That's correct. And even, you know, we've implemented, we've done some creative things with, remember with the the partnership that we now have with AAA, where we're providing hearing, dental, and vision. Significant, you know, a partnership there. That's 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 being incorporated, that's being implemented now as we speak. So we've been able to build the program, but you know, the millage is certainly, you know, and I love to say this any chance I get in front of a microphone, the millage is certainly something that is is needed.
Absolutely. And Commissioner Gessler?
Thank you, Chair. I attended the Kalamazoo County Advocates for Senior Issues Meeting yesterday, and Mike Frye was the speaker. And I'm not sure he's aware of the fact that nobody specifically asked it, and I tried to lie low, but I I don't think he knows that he may get bailed if that.
He's he's actually part of the the communication that we've had with the administration. We always include the chair of the veterans because of the uniqueness of the the funding formula.
He didn't exactly have his hat in his hand, but I thought he was thinking he was running out of money.
He's a pretty good poker player himself, so.
Okay, okay. Thank you. He did say yesterday, you'll humor me a little bit longer, John, that they had purchased, and you're probably aware of this, because you probably signed the check, a thousand signs saying vote for its yard sign saying, you know, vote for the veterans' millage. And I would think it'd be appropriate, since we did have a unanimous decision here, to put it on the ballot. If each of us had one in our yard, if that's permitted by your neighborhood, just to let people know that the the county commissioners back this a hundred percent.
And yeah, I've been, did you use another poker reference? We've got the, we've got, we've got a overs, over unders, full house right now with unanimous support from the county commission. We've got a lot of support from both political sides of the aisle, and every different ideology in Kalamazoo County is rallying behind this veterans' millage. I've never quite seen anything like in politics in my long days here. But I I feel confident that it's going to pass. If it does not, we're going to need to probably reassess. But I think Vice Chair Ray's question of the, you know, what do they need from the hundred thousand? And, you know, the answer is about twenty. I think we put maybe twenty five, and then we put the other seventy five back into the the thing. But I'm sorry, Deputy Administrator Cole?
I I just want to say for the record, I I know Commissioner Gessler, but but yeah, the county dollars were not used on those signs. They cannot be, and they were not. So but I just wanted to say that for the Yeah.
Shame on me. I didn't even think about that. That's thank you.
No, we. Okay, so I'm going through, and before I get this to you, Terrell, because I'm sorry, I keep on saying right before. I'm just gonna go through these numbers and tell me if I'm if I'm off. We've got one point three six zero in ARPA. If we were to use an unrestricted unallocated reserves of the two point four five million, four hundred and fifty thousand of that those dollars, we are. Of that those dollars, we are at one point eight one zero million. Now, we go through, we've eliminated Corporation Council, well then, the Matter Management System would then go into the. The ongoing operational dollars. We'd keep the planning and development countywide infrastructure. From what I'm hearing, unless I hear from other Commissioners, we'd keep the prosecuting attorney recruitment and retention incentive. And we'd keep the sheriff recruitment and retention incentive and the sheriff funding to police academy programs, and we put the body cameras to. Unrestricted. Whatever reserves and then for the L A T C F funding, we take that hundred thousand dollar appropriation to twenty five to get them from November and December. And we guaranteed that right away. We'd definitely, if the millage does pass, we'd have to have some serious conversations. So that generates. I'm doing my math right. Two hundred and forty one thousand minus eighty. Six hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars would be spent. Would be kept from the administration recommendation out of the one point eight one million. So we'd be left with about one point one one seven one. Yeah, one point one seven one. A million dollars for the aspirational projects. Am I? I hope I'm doing this right. He's just like, I'm not getting it all to me.
Chair, if I may, I just want to make sure, yeah, that I'm following, so. So so the balance that, yeah, that we had for ARPA was one point three six. We're removing some items here, so it sounds like we wanted to move the matter management, so I have that. And then the body warrant cameras, so I have that. So that leaves us.
And then seventy five thousand of the L A T C F.
So then what I have though left is in terms of reallocation in in total. Would be. In in terms of ARPA dollars, if if we're moving to some of those items, I have six hundred and seventy two thousand dollars. I guess I don't know where the.
Yeah, I did. I added the four fifty from unrestricted unallocated reserves out of the two point four five million. I kept two million in there and then put four fifty of that, those dollars. So that's how I got from the six seventy two. To four fifty.
I I I'm following, yeah, I apologize. I, yep, so we're taking, if you want to remind me just one more time, we're, how much from the two point four five?
Just four hundred and.
Four hundred and fifty, perfect, thank you.
And then that would put us at one two two zero. I was off, so you were right, one two two zero. Vice Chair Ray.
Thank you, Chair. So I agree with all of that, except should we set the seventy five thousand to the side and wait to see what happens with the millage before we. Allocate that funding in case we need to give it to the veterans.
I'm okay with that. Okay, so that would take it down seventy five thousand to one. One four five.
So 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 Chair, I I have what Commissioner Deluca said, I have one point zero nine seven million.
So you have the one point two two zero minus the seventy five?
Yeah, so so the way I'm calculating in my spreadsheet here, I have, I think what we're missing. So within the ARPA initiatives, there's that planning and development countywide infrastructure plan, so that's seventy five thousand. We have prosecuting attorney recruitment and retention at a hundred and fifty thousand. Then sheriff recruitment and retention at two hundred thousand, and then the sheriff police academy support at two hundred and eighty nine thousand eight hundred dollars. That's seven hundred fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars from ARPA. So if you subtract that from the. One point three six million. But add in the four hundred and fifty thousand from general fund balance, that 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 gets you to one million ninety seven thousand six hundred eighty eight dollars. To leverage for the community. Transformative initiatives.
Okay. I just did that, and I think you're. Right now, that's that's because we put the seventy five thousand, we're putting the whole hundred thousand in L A T C F. Knowing that we may only use twenty five, but we've they've got the full hundred if they need need to utilize it. Okay. Questions from Commissioners? All right, now you get to take it away, Terrell, I promise.
Well, thi- this is still a collaborative part. Hopefully it won't take an hour and a half to to get to this part, but. So this is dollars. We just want to put dollars to these initiatives, and then we're gonna do a facilitated activity. And then, thank you Commissioner for that support, and then we'll go from there. So let's just put some dollars to this. And then what we're gonna do is. We have these dots, and so this kind of goes back to, yes, dots, and then we're gonna go back to the your top three out of these, right? And then that will indicate to us a board priority, right, in its totality. Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. I just have one question before we start the the dot project. Um, is this where we want to consider the Y W C A? Or are we just not talking about that?
It's an excellent question, Vice Chair. So I would encourage the board, yeah, if if you'd like to entertain. That that community. Request as part of this process, we're we're more than willing to write that down on the on the on the board here.
Yeah, I hadn't heard from Commissioners that that was a priority, so Commissioner. Good question. Oh, I'm sorry, I was like, what? Okay, any other Commissioner? Comments?
I'm comfortable with having us having additional dialogue around the. The Y W C A. I also wonder if before we do dots, can we talk? To some, you know, understanding of what each of these programs actually entails beyond just the. Dollar amounts that helps educate us to support what we like.
I think that's a great idea, and I'll probably allow each Commissioner like three to five minutes if you've championed one of these ideas. I'll certainly talk about the Tri Care one, but yeah, if we can go at, once we put dollar amounts down, I think it makes more sense to do that first.
Yes, so for the first one, Tri Share, Chair, I don't know if you had a a number button in the conversation. We're looking at a three-year pilot with a total amount of six hundred thousand for the three years. Funding the Employee Benefits Fund to support this effort with a with a drawdown schedule. Require a little bit of research from administration in terms of looking at eligible populations, just to make sure that we are right sizing that that pilot. And what this is, is a partnership, three entity partnership, hence the try, whereas the shared response, reducing the cost of daycare. I think around sixty percent or so for participants. The participants would usually follow the Alice population of employees within the within the county. This is an employee-only eligible effort. I do believe that folks have to be in between two hundred percent to three hundred and twenty five percent above poverty guidelines.
That's. Predominantly credits two thirds, one third would be the employee, one third would be the employer, and one third would be the state. So basically, our contribution. We'd put a pilot program, and I'm just looking at some numbers, and I got some recent information, I'm sorry, even the last like hour. But the, you know, Bronson has capped it at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They have sixty six employees utilizing it at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I don't know if we'll get to a hundred and sixty thousand, sixty six employees with the restrictions that we have. Child age and everything else. I think a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, a hundred and six, I think putting that number at five hundred. Instead of six hundred is probably for a three-year pi- pilot project is probably a safer bet, because we do have the ability to cap it, cap the dollar amounts. So five hundred thousand would be probably a more appropriate number. It would go to our employee benefits fund, all that five hundred thousand we put in employees benefit fund. And over three years, it would, as Terrell said, it would get drawn down. Now, the current people that are using using it right now, Bronson uses it. I've heard Borges is about to. Looking into it and may start soon. ComComstock Community Learning, Green Leaf Trust, Stuart Sutherland. Y W C A, Landscape Forums, ROI, Shared Prosperity. These are all people that are employers that. Are utilizing this program. Now, there was one. Operational thing in effect, but more and more are getting licensed. You just have to be a licensed daycare provider. And then it it's a it's a system that I think will help with retention and recruitment. So that's kind of my pitch on the Tri Care program. We can go next.
Next is the Employee Emergency Fund. That would be in a sense sponsored by Commissioner Morales. Do you want to describe the overall?
I can't, I'll call. Miss Smith up as well. This is a project that actually we've been working on over a year. So we couldn't figure out how we wanted to put these funds into place. It went from housing and. Me and. Miss Smith went back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, and I said, you know, well, give me some recommendations, and we came, she came up with. The Employee Emergency Fund, so. Her and Mr. Cole went over and did some additional research from some of the things that we had panned out. And was it Stanford? Yeah, Stanford University has an Employee Emergency Assistance Fund. Once I looked over what they had in place in their data, I was really bored. There's a couple tweaks in here, but I'll start with. Miss Smith first and then.
All right, yeah, I'll just kind of go in and and speak kind of high level, and then Commissioner Morales, you just jump on in, so. The Stanford University's Employee Emergency Assistance Fund, how that works is that employees may apply for help when they experience a short-term financial emergency. Or an unanticipated expense that caused a financial hardship. It reimburses actual expenses arising from a qualified event, so employees can recover quickly. Their particular program has two different types of grants, ones if it's a qualified disaster, the other one is a personal hardship. These grants are considered non-taxable income, and they are also not loans that do not have to be repaid. Awards are based on financial need and the severity and impact of the disaster or other emergency on the employee or their family. From research, generally you can expect two point five to one percent of your workforce to participate annually. So on the high end, we're looking about a hundred employees participating on an annual basis. It's dependent on what you want that max award to be per year and per employee. Some Stanford University's actually has a max on, you know, kind of the lifetime award. But with us looking at a pilot program, I think that would be something that we're not necessarily looking at at this point in time. I'll pause there and see if Commissioner Morales, you want to add anything?
Yeah, so a thousand dollar max, we're looking at a hundred thousand dollar acts. There are some more tweaks that, you know, we want to fit for our county employees. We did want this to be. Private, so we looked, we talked about having an outside agency handle. The funding and the application process, and that would be a cost as well. Also, I just, you know, I want to look at what some of our disaster, you know. What we would consider a disaster in Kalamazoo, from funeral expenses to mortgage payments to rent to things like that. So I don't want to. I'm sorry.
I was even suggesting emergency car repair.
Correct, yes. So, you know, I don't want to dig too deep into folks' situation, but an emergency is an emergency, you know. Sometimes it just may be the your car gets into an accident, or you can't afford a rental car because your car is being repaired and they're six weeks out. So I thought this was a great way to, as an employee incentive, you know, to retain our employees and to show them that. We do care about them. I also tapped on. Smith's and our administrator and our D E I showed her to see if they would participate in the program. And one out of three would, and so then I proposed a question, and it was kind of a. A pride thing, I don't want people in my business or I can afford it, and so then I put on the table. What's the difference between this and tuition reimbursement? And so that was a, they couldn't like differentiate, both of them, you know, can you afford to pay two thousand for classes when? I'll say you're on a Z scale as opposed to an H scale, and if you can say yes, then what's the difference of applying for something? Someone else had. A tree fall on their house and, you know, the the. Money came up short, and I'm like, so why wouldn't you fill out this paper? And they were like, well. Because someone else might need it, and the bottom line is, I want this equitable across the board because someone. Making a hundred thousand or eighty might not have that. They might have a family of ten that they're supporting, so I don't want to be judgmental. And going by income and things like that. I want this to be equitable. I want people to feel safe when they're applying for this, and I want our. Employees to know that we care about them, and this is a way of giving back.
Thank you, Vice Chair Ray.
Just a question, I might have missed it. So I imagine we have something very similar, but it's a loan program, so will this be a loan or just, okay?
No loan, no repayment, and it's non-taxable, so you won't have to claim it, you know, on your taxes. This would be a separate. Pot of money or check that would go to the individual.
And I'm assuming this would be required to be ARPA then, because, right? For legal reasons, I don't think you can use tax. But it could be ARPA money.
Correct, yeah, so it could be, you know, we could certainly leverage the ARPA dollars and and instead of the the general fund, fund balance for that, yeah. So we can make that note.
And and just to clarify too, I mean, this is basing it off of, we've done some preliminary research, you know, and this is. Specifically, these are grants are considered non-taxable income. They are not loans and do not have to be repaid. This is based off of what Stanford University's program that they have. There would need to be a little bit more research. And again, for Stanford University, they also have a third party that administers it, and so that contracting, so. Including that where, you know, we have to dive in a little bit more about what that cost would be, but just wanted to clarify that point real fast.
Thank you. Commissioner Strobs.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to Deputy Administrator Smith and Commissioner Morales for. For working on this and finding additional ways to support our employees. I just want to understand what other supports. Do we offer them currently within their benefit package for emergencies such as long and short-term disability? Accident insurance, death dismemberment insurance, that some that might. Like be covering some of the types of emergencies I'm hearing. Sort of discussed in our dialogue here. Certainly, it doesn't cover things like car repair, but like some of those insurances do cover utility or rent payment, so. I don't know if you guys talked through some of that.
So we didn't talk about if this was short-term disability. We talked about if I'm working right now and I need help right now. So we didn't dive into that, and I don't want. Our employees to feel like they have to put in the claim to be sick or FMLA to get this type of insurance, so I mean, this type of. Incentive, so we didn't, we didn't take a deep dive into that. This is just for if Morales had a hardship right now, for whatever reason. You know, if it's my, we give rental assistance to folks through ARPA and, you know, all these different agencies. If I had an emergency today. That I would be able to get this, and I don't think that. Our our pop, you know, our insurance will cover things like that.
So. Do we offer something like an Aflac coverage that provides for certain emergencies that people come up with? They do cover like. Utilities and I don't know, I'm not familiar with the full benefit package for employees, so. Do we have something like that?
We do, I I'm getting some information now, and I'll be able to share in just a moment, yep.
Did you have a question?
Vice Chair Ray.
He took his question back. Okay, I really like this idea, but I'm thinking about sustainability, and then when we talk about we have to allocate ARPA funding, we can't use general. Fund dollars for this, so down the line, this would just be like a one-year, one-and-done type of program. I'm all for free money, but. But if we made this a loan program, it would sustain itself and allow the employee to kind of set up the terms of the agreement themselves. Like that's kind of what we do at my, at my job. We can say, hey, we got $25 every two weeks for the next four years for $1,500 for a consumer bill or whatever it is. But it gives us some sustainability and it doesn't just have to be, we give out $100,000 and then the program disappears.
Commissioner Morales.
Yeah, so when we looked into this, I mean, Stanford doesn't have ARPA dollars. So there's a way that they're working in this that it doesn't have to be taxable. So I don't know, we didn't want it to be a loan program. We wanted to be able to have this as an incentive, like a real incentive for our employees. And so when we looked at the dollars, if we said, hey, if we run out of $100,000, then we know the program is working. And then we would rebudget it, excuse me, every year. So then Lindy, I'll let you speak a little more on, on that aspect.
I'm, I'm sorry, can you, will you repeat the, the question I was talking with Administrator?
Sorry, Vice Chair Ray commented on making this a loan program and we worked to stay away from that. And so we were going off of Stanford's model where obviously there's a way that this works because they're now using ARPA dollars. This has been something that has been consistent with what they're doing. And then Commissioner Ray, you wanted us to ask Angelina?
No, so I, I think I feel like I hear the question that's coming out of it and it's probably a question for Angelina. Somebody just said we can't use general fund dollars and it's probably because we can't use county funds to help one individual person. I don't know, maybe it's a question for Angelina as to why we can't use the general fund dollars.
Thank you, Vice Chair Ray. Yeah, so there are, there's about three different primary ways that you can create a tax-advantaged employer-provided crisis fund. And so that keeps it tax-free, but they have to be provided through a public charity, a donor-advised fund or private foundation. And so to start that up, to start that primary funds, that's why we'd have to use the ARPA dollars. We can't use the public funds to benefit private individuals. So you were spot on.
It's certainly something that if it did get brought up, it would be a request to the community foundation, probably, I'm assuming. But Vice Chair Pro-Tam Hepple.
Thank you, Chair. Now, you indicated you needed about a hun, you felt $100,000, but you indicated also there was expenses. So then that should probably be something more than $100,000 would be my guess. I'm just asking for a friend.
Yeah, so the hundred was just the base amount. So you had an idea of what we wanted to invest in employees. Deputy Smith is going to look into what an agency cost may look like and we didn't have that amount. So we just didn't want to throw out an arbitrary number and say, hey, it's 150 and it's really not. Based on our conversation, she didn't think that it would be more than $25,000, but she wanted to check with, you know, with some different agencies to see what that cost would look like. So it wouldn't be more than, we hope, $150,000 asked total.
Okay, any other questions, Vice Chair Ray, sorry?
One more question, because I think this is a good idea and I'm thinking about supporting it. But would it cost us $50,000 to use HR? Like it can be a form they submit to HR. Like if you had a request for your 401K, you go to HR. Why are we trying to avoid HR for this?
I asked that as well. And we wanted, based on the Stanford's model and different models that she looked into, it was best that we go to a third party. That was the first thing I asked. I'm like, we got HR, why can't HR do this? If I have to go on medical leave, HR knows my business. Like, so I asked and they wanted to stay in alignment with how others were using models. And that was the model to use a third-party agency. That was the recommendation.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, but it doesn't make sense to pay an outside agency 50% of what we're giving away. Like that defeats the purpose of the whole program. We're only able to help 100 employees if we're giving them $1,000. And then we pay somebody else an additional cost. It doesn't really make sense to even do it.
Corporations Council.
Thank you, Chair. One of the things is the public employer themselves couldn't keep it in-house and administer it. As a public employer, it has to be through the third party to be that tax-advantaged plan, so.
And, and also it's just a, we're just kind of estimating. I mean, more research would have to be done. If this is a project that y'all are considering and wanting to move forward on that, at that point in time, I think we would have that direction to do that additional research. So we're just kind of providing that higher number just to kind of safeguard it. But until that research is done, until that direction is given.
Thank you. Administrator Kellman, you got an answer?
Yes, I do have that answer for Commissioner Strobs and the board. So we do have a short-term, long-term disability. However, those can't be used for the emergencies that we're kind of contemplating. We do offer deferred compensation plans, but those have very strict and limited uses for any emergency purposes. So, you know, employees can tap into that if they contribute to their deferred comp, but it's only for very specific situations. And it wouldn't really be for the sort of situations that we've contemplated today.
And then the last thing I'll just add to that is again, just this one program in particular that we saw that we thought was a good model. Of course, more research needs to be done, but they have a turnaround time of roughly 10 days of being able, once the employee submits all the required documentation and then that third party reviews it, it's a turnaround time generally about 10 days.
Commissioners Strobs, and then I want to move on to the next one.
So just to, I mean, I think there are also some, some insurance plans that we should probably think through as potential for the benefit package. So if we develop a program like this for certain emergencies outside of it, but there, you know, there are pretty low-cost, you know, I, I don't sell insurance. I don't want to lift up any additional names, but, you know, just from my experience with employers and they cover a variety of sort of emergency expenses when you're out of work and you can't, you get hurt and you can't work.
Thank you guys very much. Deputy Administrator Cole, next one.
All right, well then, yes, the, the next one was previously discussed at a previous board meeting, which was the medical, medical bill relief. And I think some numbers were kind of thrown around, but I, I don't know what that final number was. Administrator?
Yes, so I was speaking, actually I sent some information to the board from Commissioner Strobs this afternoon, around this afternoon. But in speaking with Commissioner Strobs, the number for Kalamazoo County as a whole is, it's around 930,000, I believe you said. But the Kalamazoo County portion of that is around 460,000, if I recall. Something around there. We would then anticipate, that's just the county's portion that we would, that we'd be reviewing potentially. What we would, what we, there still needs to be some research done on how the state would match dollars. So potentially if our, if our obligation is 460,000, something around there, if the state would match, if, if we put up, you know, 230,000, maybe they would match 230,000. We just don't know what the match looks like yet. There's, they're still in process of developing that criteria. So we just don't know what that looks like yet, but I'll turn it over to Commissioner Strobs.
Thank you, Administrator. So just to, to lift up again, the, you know, high-level overview. Medical debt, number one cause of bankruptcy. Lot of our folks that go for supportive housing to like Community Homeworks or KNHS cite medical debt as a reason they cannot afford to fix their roof. And medical debt makes people avoid care and treatment when they need it. So RIP medical debt, this would be very low administrative burden for the county. This national nonprofit would administer the program. They would negotiate with our health systems locally, who would identify the debt portfolio that would be served. It would be for people at 400% of the federal poverty guideline and below. And based on our demographics and income, what we're talking about here is about $84 million of medical debt that is currently on the backs of community members right now that we could dissolve tax-free gift from them. There's the potential for collaboration. So the email sent from Administrator today, the city of Kalamazoo is also interested in collaborating on the program. The state has developed a budget line item of $4.9 million. These would be matched dollars for local units. The total cost to wipe out all of the debt currently estimated for folks within the guidelines is about 84, I'm sorry, $89 million. But, you know, a large proportion of that is within the city of Kalamazoo. They carry about 34% of the total debt. To wipe the debt in, just in the city is $321,000. So what we have here is a potential collaboration between the city, the county and the state. Our contribution would max out at half of, you know, if we got one, a dollar-for-dollar match from the state, our maximum commitment would be about 466,000. And that would wipe out the medical debt for everyone, you know, below that poverty guideline in the county. And that's without, if we don't get collaboration from the city of Kalamazoo. I'm also been in dialogue, seeing where donor-directed funds or philanthropy community may also be willing to participate with us. So there's a major collaborative potential here that could have large and reverberating effect. It would be expected to impact about 38,300 people within Kalamazoo County. And some federal laws have been changed as well. So when you carry a medical debt that's having a negative impact on your credit report, once that is cleared, your credit report is cleared as well. So this would improve the buying and financial position of community members along with wiping the debt out. So it's an economic driver as well for community members. So morally, economically and collaboratively, it's something that I will continue to lift up and I hope we can find some resources to collaborate and make an impact for people in need. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one quick question. I certainly support the, the concept of this and I think you're, you're right, spot on as an economic development opportunity as well. Eliminating the, creating the purchasing power, increasing the purchasing power of 38,000 people is certainly something substantial and it allows more people to go through some of the programs that we have, like our Housing Assistance Fund, our housing, trying to find, you know, housing. That's the number one barrier is medical debt of trying to get affordable housing. The question I had was the 4.9 million that's been allocated by the state, and you touched on this, realistically with Oakland, McComb, Wayne, all these big guys from the east side of the state, you know, trying to leverage as much as they can on these dollars. Our end of the stick is going to probably be shorter than that. We're probably going to be appropriated from the state, I'm guessing, in the hundreds of, a couple hundred thousand dollar range. You, you talked about donor-directed funds. If we were to go with the full 400, with that, that you were, you're implying or you're, you're stating that we, if we don't get the full amount from the state, we can also seek the other half of that from donors?
Yeah, I think we have major potential to seek other opportunities, including collaboration with the city. Now, because they are within the county as well, so they may be a partner for us to put forth funds. So I think, you know, working collaboratively, I, I think we can find a match. We may not even need to put in half of it, you know, in entirety. The other thing to clarify is it also depends on what our local medical systems are willing to sell in debt. So these are estimates based on our demographics, but what we ultimately, what RIP debt can leverage and be offered to buy, it may be more or less, these are estimated resources until we begin to really explore the purchase.
And this is probably an Angelina question. Well, maybe it's a question for you, Jen, Mr. Strobs. The, the, if the city was to come in with their, gosh, I've lost the number I put down. 321, thank you. The city was to come in with the 321,000, that would lower ours substantially because then we'd just be responsible for the outlying county areas, the townships and portage, correct?
I mean, there would have to be a sort of an intergovernmental agreement and collaboration. RIP medical debt right now is working with the city of Toledo and their county, who's the name of the county, I forget. But they are working through a process like that where resources from both entities, county resources also help support relief for city residents, but they've worked out a formula about how the resources are allocated to make it the biggest bang that they can with the resources.
Appreciate that. Any other questions from commissioners? Sounds like a good idea. Next up, foreclosure prevention.
Yeah, so last year, or no, at the beginning of this year. So I was in the treasurer's office trying to get a list of folks who were looking at foreclosure in my district so I could do some outreach, find out what programs were available to assist folks. And the treasurer told me that the city of Kalamazoo had given $50,000 to his office as a pilot program to take care of one-year property taxes for folks who are at risk of losing their home for property taxes within the city of Kalamazoo. I thought it was a, a great thing. There were not very many barriers. I do believe some barriers were created and I would like, if we choose to do this, that for us not to do the same. But I think that it's a great thing for us to be able to help residents. It's not paying off the whole three years, it's one year. And I believe it was only like $50,000. I don't even know if all of it was used because at the end, I believe some folks in the city were still, I don't know, but $50,000 is the request and that is what it's for. Any questions?
Commissioner Strobs.
Vice Chair, do you have an estimate about how many homes that we think that might impact based on the cost of the future?
I don't know, I can ask the treasurer though and get back to you.
Most of them.
Director Balkam, I might know too. She is very knowledgeable.
Thank you, Vice Chair. It's about $3,000 to $5,000 to get someone off the foreclosure list. The city of Kalamazoo has given money for a number of years. It comes from the Foundation for Excellence. It does not come from the Ed Blorm Tax or their general fund.
All right, so we've heard an overview of the suggested programs. In quick summary, again, for the financial exercise that we took under as, as a group, that was 1,097,000 as far as available funds. And the, these programs come to a 1,216,000. Okay, so what we'd like to do is to distribute these dots. Each commissioner receives, yes, Commissioner Ray.
Vice Chair, thank you. Are we going to ask the YWCA or no? Are we moving on?
Vice Chair, please forgive me. Yes.
Are we going to add the, the YWCA request for $100,000 or? I feel like we have just taken a lot of.
I think we can, we've taken a lot of time. We can put it on there and commissioners can vote on your top three priorities. And we've heard a lot of comment from the YWCA and from people opposed and supporting it both. So I don't know if we need a, do you want, unless you want to talk about it, the proposal or?
No.
No, okay, we'll just have a vote. And Commissioner Gessler.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to talk about not only the YWCA, but also Southwest Michigan First. These are two nonprofits that we have in the past from, put money into. I don't think it's at all appropriate for us to make those kinds of donation decisions with taxpayer money. I have, since I was the first elected back in 2010, I've said, let's not put a nickel into Southwest Michigan First, even though I think they do wonderful work. I feel the same way about the why. Whether you love abortion or don't, they have no business getting taxpayer money. If they want $100,000, let's find 1,000 taxpayers that'll write them a $100 check. And for Southwest Michigan First, 75 usually is what they get. Let's have 750 people write them a $100 check, all right, the first one. I think they do wonderful work, but let's not, let's not get carried away here.
I completely agree with you, Gessler. The only. I completely agree with you, Gessler. The only difference would be the Southwest Michigan first, they would need seven hundred and fifty. They'd probably only need like seven and a half because the checks would be bigger, but I completely, completely agree with you. But yeah, sorry about that. I just couldn't help myself. But yes, I I do agree with your your premise of your comments, Commissioner Gessler. Are there any other, we've all got our three dots. We've got, as Terrell said. Deputy Director Cole said, we've got one point two two six million, now one point three two six million. And we've got one point one million roughly in expenditures. Now, we did just increase the. If we get to three or four, we did just increase our. Forecast from four to four and a half percent. So that that could take some of the training incentives that we had, that were coming out of ARPA. To move over to that. So but let's, if all commissioners want to go up there and put three dots up there and. I know, I think each color is, we're, it's exact, it's worth one vote. We're really, really close to funding them all, but I think one or two of them are gonna have to go. Yeah, Vice Chair Ray.
Thank you, Chair. We almost have enough to fund all of them, so why are we?
We don't have the money to fund all of them. We have the money to fund most of them.
We're close. I just don't feel like we should have to pick three. The sheriff did not have to pick three, no.
Should we all get four dots, you know? I, let's everybody gets an extra dot. If we took bitter engagement down to zero, could we put that back in there? So it looks like the one, two, three, and four from this far away, and that's going to. Add up to under the one point one nine, or what, correct?
Sorry, the cumulative of those four is one million one hundred and sixty-six thousand.
So that leaves us thirty-two thousand roughly?
Well, what I, what I, yeah, so we are, let me see, minus one, oh. So sixty-nine, sixty-nine thousand.
So it leaves us sixty-nine or we're over, we're short sixty-nine thousand?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, yeah.
I, let me turn off my mic.
Now, a lot of these projects need to be one-time dollars. With the exception of like, I've still am pretty adamant that bitter engagement, we're still gonna pursue a responsible contract policy. But it's just not going to be funded at the, through the ARPA dollars, which I didn't, wasn't anticipating it would be anyway. So I don't, don't have any problem with that. We're talking about it next. The, so sixty, the roughly six hundred thousand dollars that was done with the Administrator Catlin. The roughly six hundred thousand dollars that was done from the four to four point five and the two hundred to two point two. Could you, and do you guys feel confident that part of those retention? Employee retention commitments from the sheriff's office or from anywhere else could be allocated from that additional revenue? And then that could free up that sixty-seven thousand from from those ARPA requests? Or is that six hundred thousand dollars? Cause we're looking at a roughly sixty-seven grand, correct? That now in that, or that thing that we had from recommendations from. For for use from ARPA from administration, we took a few of them out, the body cameras we put to C I P. The other, those others, could we take sixty-seven thousand dollars of say the sheriff's two hundred thousand dollars? And still give him two hundred thousand dollars, but take sixty-seven thousand dollars of it and. Post that from the new revenue as one-time funding? Or would it just make more sense and would it just be a lot cleaner if we just instead of taking four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, took. Five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars? What what's your preference?
Yeah, the very good questions, Chair. So I think. I I suppose what I'd recommend with, I mean, it's about seventy thousand dollar shortfall with regard to these. Options and just for those at home. The categories that that have the most votes are the tri-share childcare program, the employee emergency fund, the medical bill relief. Initiative and then the foreclosure prevention. And so. Those all add up to about a million one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. We have a balance to work with of a million ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. I would, you know, recommend, I mean, we do have the L A T C F funds that has the balance that we need to to satisfy. To address.
The the only, the only, my only concern about the L A T C F is I'm confident that the Veterans Millage is going to pass. I haven't seen, like I said before, I haven't seen so many different ideologies and groups of people rallying behind this. From all different walks of life. But the, so I'm confident it's gonna pass, but I still have a little bit of trepidation. Committing that seventy-five thousand extra of L A, because we're gonna need twenty-five to get them through the rest of the year. Committing that seventy-five thousand because we're going to need it if this millage fails. So, you know, I I see your point. What are other commissioners' thoughts? Would you rather, Commissioner Gessler?
Thank you, Chair. As you're aware, you pointed out to me that I'd actually voted for one of the millages over the last decade. I can't remember which one it was now, but transit, oh, right. And this one, we should have approved this one decades ago. I I'm embarrassed to be a resident of Kalamazoo County and not take better care of our veterans. So I do think, as you do, that it's gonna pass in a in a walk. On the other hand, I do think it makes good sense. We've been less conservative over a couple of things now in the last couple weeks or months. And to just hang in there with that, just so we, if the world comes to an end, we could still get them through the end of the year. I I I support you a hundred percent.
What are other, Commissioner DeLuca?
Instead of looking for more revenue, can't we decrease one of the expenses? Commissioner Shrubbs indicated that especially the medical bill relief, there may be a huge impact on our expense based on the contributions of others. So, I mean, I, I would just like to reduce that expense now into where we needed action.
I I think we can reduce the tri-share to say, what's it at five hundred now? We could reduce that to four eighty. That's twenty thousand of it. That that leaves us fifty to go. I I'm okay with doing that. But then we still have to come up with the other fifty.
Well, I suggest we take the rest of the medical building.
Okay, Vice Chair Ray, there is.
Yeah, I I don't agree with that. I just wanna make sure we have enough money. But we can take it from the tri-share. But I guess. I, when I went through some of the budget recommendations and we don't have the entire budget book yet. However, I saw some things in the recommendations that I wasn't necessarily in support of. So are we ever gonna, are we gonna get to that phase where it's like, you know, we don't support another position in this office or that office? Or maybe they don't need ten positions, they only need nine. Instead of looking at trying to cut the only one million dollars that we have for aspirational programs, when there's so many other things in the budget. That are just like, are they necessary? We're already funding this and it's not built. Why will we support another ten positions? When they can't fill the one. So just something to think about.
How about this? Can we leave that seven, now we're down to fifty after taking the twenty out or forty-eight? Can we leave that forty-eight hole in there and reduce contingency by forty-eight? As we go through, knowing that you can increase the contingency numbers with the extra six hundred thousand in revenue. That's coming from the four percent to four point five. We'll take it out of contingency from that. Knowing that as we go through the expenditure side, there might be some things that we can, we can beef it up, contingency will be low. But it it can get beefed up as we move forward in the the budget process. Does that make sense, commissioners? Is everybody amenable to that process? I think you can still reduce the tri-share because I was a bit, that five hundred number after looking at Bronson has sixty-six employees. Participating and they're at a hundred and fifty thousand. If we're looking at a three-year program at four eighty, that's a buck sixty a year. That's a little bit more. We'd need about seventy employees to participate. I don't think we have seventy employees with, that are of Alice eligible income levels. So I I think reducing that to four eighty is is sufficient. That leaves us with a fifty thousand, roughly forty-eight thousand, fifty thousand dollar deficit. Of which we would pull from contingency, knowing that as we went through the expenditures, we would beef up the contingency portion in that. Does that make sense? Okay, cool. I think we've got our aspirational projects pretty much done and approved. Now, we are. First, thank you, administration and finance and everybody on this staff. Because this was a, this was probably the most interactive budget process that we've done and very informed. And I like the idea with the the, I mean, coming up with, how are we gonna do that? I think you you did a good service there. Next up is responsible bidder policy. Now, we talked about that and there and bitter engagement. I'm still, I I think we can move this to, in the deference of time at six twelve right now. We can move this and have a longer discussion at our next county commissioner meeting. Because I think this will be a more, a little bit more in-depth and nuanced, if that's okay with commissioners. And I don't anticipate it costing fifty. Probably it'll be closer to the neighborhood of three to five if we do the enforcement right. It's all about the enforcement piece and how we position that with our structure. Next is first reading resolution supporting the expansion of access to driver's license in the state of Michigan. Commissioner Shrubbs.
Thank you, Chair. So we have a couple of pieces of legislation pending in the House and Senate. They have broad. Support, many co-signers in the legislative branch, including our entire local delegation. Kalamazoo County supported similar proclamation in twenty nineteen. So this is just to address it in the current legislative session. Since two thousand and eight, individuals who are undocumented immigrants no longer have access to legal valid driver's license. It creates large impediments to their safety, quality of life. And opening this back up is supported by the governor. Our secretary of state, our our local clerk. As well, and would generate hundreds of millions of dollars in additional tax revenue for the state. So I'm asking the county commission to support it.
Discussion, Commissioner Gessler.
Thank you, Chair. Question I have is the use of the term. What is it? Oh, I'll find it. Oh, the undocumented. Not citizens, because they're not citizens. Actually, what a large portion of this will be is driver's licenses for illegal aliens. Is that not true?
Commissioner, the direction, the question was directed at Commissioner Shrubbs. I will let you, Commissioner Morales, answer after.
May I defer to Commissioner Morales to speak?
You may. It is your privilege.
Thank you. First of all, we're not illegal aliens. Everyone is a human being. They have taken that term off of applications. And have used undocumented. So I would like that respect in this room. Because they are people and we are not aliens. Thank you.
Excuse me, but the federal government stills refer to illegal aliens. If you're here in this country illegally, you are an alien and you're illegal. Thank you.
Undocumented doesn't mean that you can have a visa. You can have different ways of being here. So they are changing those terms, starting on the federal level, starting with FAFSA applications that do not have illegal aliens on there.
I've got Commissioner, Vice Chair Ray next, and then Commissioner Shrubbs.
I just wanted to bring peace. Could we maybe change the term to undocumented community members? Would that make you happy and not use that term? It's 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 true. I think you know. It's it's true. I think you know that too. But would you feel better if we said undocumented?
I'd be happy to change it once the federal government no longer refers to those same people as illegal aliens. Sorry.
Okay, we've got disagreement but support. This is the first reading. We do not vote on this until the seven o'clock or the seven o'clock meeting, correct Angelina? Or next meeting, next week. Commissioner Strebs.
Thank you, Chair. And though I agree with the comments of my excellent colleagues, Vice Chair Ray and Commissioner Morales, I would just direct Commissioner Gessler's attention to the language within the proclamation. It also notes whereas DACA recipients, undocumented immigrants, legal immigrants who have not received their verification documents because of bureaucratic delays, rural and elderly people who do not have birth certificates, citizens born abroad and foreign adoptees would all benefit directly from the legislation and the expansion access to driver's licenses. Thank you.
Commissioner Gessler.
Thank you again, Chair. I'd like to also remind everyone that there are thirty one states that have not done this. You still cannot get a driver's license if you're an illegal alien. And we would be one of nineteen. I guess we would become number twenty. But that still leaves thirty that would not. So, you know, we're we're not swimming upstream or anything here. Thank you.
Appreciate it. And this will be voted on at our seven o'clock meeting in two weeks. Okay, next up, we have consideration of a request to change the name of the Justice Center. This is much Commissioner Catler, Administrator Catler.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Chairman, Commissioner. So we received, oh, did we miss one?
I'm sorry, I skipped one. I'm sorry, Administrator. This is probably the resolution establishing the Kalamazoo, Kalamazoo County Opioid Settlement Fund Task Force and Ad-Hoc Committee to the Board of Commissioners. Is this Angelina? Is this you, Kevin, or is this Lindy? Lindy, do you want to do this one? Commissioner Strebs, you want to do this? All right.
Thank you very much, Chair. So I've been working thanks to the diligent work of both Corporation Council and Deputy Minister Smith. So this is establishment of the ad hoc committee to help make recommendations back to our board for the opioid settlement. There's a number of questions posed to the task force, including helping us to digest the community needs assessment. That closes on the twenty second of this month, this Friday. We've gotten a very robust community response. We're going to look at where should we concentrate funding for opioid remediation in the next three to five years? What funding categories will we consider? How should we release those funds? When will a portal be open and what will the timelines look like? We're also looking for community collaboration, prevention, education campaign, countywide emergency alert system when there's clusters of overdoses. Recommendation about expanding accessibility to Narcan and naloxone such as vending machines. How do we deal with co-occurring substance use disorders? And should we focus funding on trauma-informed and culturally competent mental health services? The makeup of the board will be consist of, may consist of, but is not limited to three of our county commissioners, a representative from HCS, Community Corrections, Sheriff's Office, Drug Treatment Court, DEI Director, and six community members at least, including representatives from mental health providers, prevention and treatment providers, community organizations, and two people that personally identify as being in active recovery or addiction or family member of somebody who has experienced that. So it'll be a wide variety of perspectives to answer the questions posed. And we'll come back to the board and make some recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Strebs and Lindy and Corporation Council. You, this, I think this really creates a lot of transparency in this process and allows the community to be more involved in the, you know, in the making of the sausage, so to speak. But any other questions from commissioners on this? Commissioner Wheeler?
You said six community members. Do you think you'll be able to get six community members? I know sometimes it can be hard.
Thank you. That's a good question, if I made you. Thank you. Based on the response from the community needs assessment, we've received an overwhelming response from the community as much as thirty percent of respondents identifying as a person in active treatment or recovery or a family member of. And one of the questions posed to them is if they wanted to participate in focus groups or other advocacy work, and there was a very strong response to that. So we have some data that we'll be able to use potentially to follow up on. But I I do think there's a lot of interest and I'm hopeful that we can meet that.
With like seventeen to sixteen to twenty million dollars of recommendations to the county board, they they certainly certainly wield a lot of power, so. Thank you very much. Next up, the name change. Administrator Catlin.
All right, thank you, Chair. So commissioners, this evening for consideration is a request from the Kalamazoo County Bar Association to rename the Kalamazoo Downtown Justice Center, which was named in, I believe it was twenty eighteen via motion from the board, from the floor to be named the Kalamazoo County Downtown Justice Center. They would like it renamed to the Judge Charles A. Pratt Justice Center. So that was a letter that came in. I apologize, it was not attached to your packet, but I'll get it attached. I thought I I'd done that, but I did not. So so you'll be able to review the letter and when we republish the packet. Nonetheless, they sent it to the chief, the chief judges directed to the chair and we'll get that out to the board. So that's the request, sort of some background and some due diligence that we conducted with the with our owner's rep and CSM, including our architect, Tower Pinkster. All of the signage in that entire building has already been ordered and and designed. All of it says Kalamazoo County Downtown Justice Center. Anyway, I thought this was I thought the actual name was limited really to the exterior of the building, which would have been probably a little less costly. However, this is, this encompasses interior signage as well, or impacts it rather. The board is, at the desire of the board, we're, we we can stand by to do whatever the wishes of the board are. We do have a suggestion, though, is that there's a couple of things we could do in honor of the late judge, is that what you could do is is possibly on the wall dedication, you could have a plaque that's that kind of commemorates the building in in the judge's name. So you could have a dedication plaque for the judge with some a brief narrative on there. You could do that. Or we could incorporate it in some sort of a public art piece. Incorporate, I said it, I apologize, the judge in some sort of a public art piece. So that's a, you know, some suggestions there. Or if the board would like, we could start obtaining quotes to change all that signage. Owner's rep does believe it'll be pretty costly, though, to do that, since all the signage was already ordered. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions from commissioners. Commissioner DeLu?
I don't have a question. I just have comment, I guess. I don't know. I remember Judge Pratt, and of course, he's certainly admirable individual, but I think there's probably more than one judge that comes to my mind that I mean, how do you pick? You know, first female judge, first Arvin Davis, first Jewish judge, you know, Judge Pratt, yeah, very, I mean, there's several people. Like the prosecutor said, you know, Jim Gregor, he was a dynamic figure in our community for decades and I certainly don't support changing all the signage, but and and why just a plaque for Judge Pratt? That's my question anyway.
Any other Commissioner Gessler, then Vice Chair Ray, and then?
Thank you, Chair. I throw this out without knowing anything about what it would cost, but maybe we could put a plaque that we could expand as new judges are chosen and list all the judges that have ever served Kalamazoo County. Is that is that going to be a plaque the size of a whole wall or something like that? But I certainly don't think we ought to spend a lot of money dedicating it to to one person by naming the whole thing. I think the city learned a hard lesson when they had the ballpark and are named after, was it Anan Mayor? And that didn't last too long before it became mayor's baseball field or whatever it is. So I'm very dead set against naming it after any single individual.
I've got Vice Chair Ray, then I've got Vice Chair Ray.
Okay, I felt like I wanted to answer Commissioner DeLu's question, but I don't remember his question anymore. But I do want to know. Yeah, you do. We're not picking the individual. Like, there was a request that came in, so if every other judge wants to have somebody write a letter, then send it to the county administrator. But I also want to lift up too for folks who may not know, but Judge Pratt was like the first black judge in Kalamazoo and perhaps the reason why folks are sending letters asking for this recommend or for us to change the name. If the signs have already been done, if we don't know how much, can we find out how much it'll cost to change it? If that's not the route we want to take, I am in support of just doing a dedication as well. But not necessarily putting up a sign that grows with every judge's name on it.
I will speak for, did you have in hand, I will speak for me. He was the first African-American chief judge, not just the first judge. He he was predominantly, he's been in the community for a long time. I remember him when I first got on the county board back in two thousand and two. He, I think he retired by then, but he was still active. Maybe that was now. That is, yeah. But anyway, I I have got no problem doing a dedication. I would also, as Commissioner Ray would see, like to see what the costs are. If it's substantial and it's, you know, just a plaque, I I would be in support of doing something. But that's, that's where I'm at. Commissioner, if you keep on, Commissioner Morales, you're like, almost you're fifty fifty. I don't know.
I am fifty fifty. I'm just so bothered today. Just, it just feels like equity is not going across the board, DEI efforts that we say is a priority is not a priority. You know, any, I've never heard a conversation when if it was a white judge that had wanted their name or someone wanted their name on a building, that this much debate or somebody would say, hey, there was a a female that was the first judge to, like, it seems like when it comes to people of color. And I'm especially offended being this Hispanic heritage month and we still freaking using illegal aliens, like just this conversation. And you may not feel like you're being intentional with your debate, but it's piercing and it feels condescending and disrespectful when it comes to the achievements that people of color across the board and all their struggles. And if it was a woman, I would be saying the same thing with all their struggles that, and particularly white men have not had in this country. So when we're looking to dedicate, especially in this small town of Kalamazoo in District One, where we have our own issue of mass incarceration with a judge that has fought with us, I'm just perplexed today. But I am in support of whatever we need to do because we, whenever we need money for anything else, we find a way to find that money and pay for it. So I am in support of naming this building after Chief Justice, not just Judge Pratt, but Chief Justice Pratt. And I think that it'll, it'll build some sense of community that black folks in this area can feel proud and and a level of respect can be gained, especially in our downtown area. Thank you.
Okay, I've got three in favor of getting price quotes and coming back with numbers and at least doing a plaque. And then two, two opposed. Commissioner Strebs?
Thank you. That was very well said, Commissioner Morales. And I, you know, if I'm open to exploring the quotes, the cost is exorbitant. The administrator lifted up a public art project. I would love that. We can do more than a a plaque if it is cost prohibitive to us. Let's get, you know, a beautiful rendering of Chief Justice. Let's, you know, create a space within the grounds to really lift up his legacy and connect this community to their center for justice, which we will continue to evolve in an equitable way. And all of us work on educating ourselves on that. Thank you.
Okay, it looks like a majority of commissioners are in support of coming back with prices of what it would cost for the signs. And then as well as maybe different options, as Commissioner Strebs said pretty eloquently of how do we, how do we honor that legacy? If it's going to be millions of dollars, maybe we can spend a lesser amount and provide more honor to the, to the legacy. So I'm I'm good with giving the administrator the flexibility. I think you've got direction and flexibility to come back with some, some options. Does that make sense? Okay. Next up, we have appropriation due to discover Kalamazoo's Downtown Dollars Program for advertising the tourist advantage the county officials attending the Michigan Association of Counties Conference. Really quick, I'll just be, we kind of went back and forth. I've been in communication a little bit with Discover Kalamazoo. And how do we, when these these commissioners from all over the state come to Kalamazoo in the beginning of October for the Michigan Association of Conference, how do we get these commissioners to go explore downtown Kalamazoo? Originally, we didn't have this option, but just recently, there's a, they came up with a Downtown Dollars thing where you give each attendee of the conference like a, basically, it's like a ten dollar gift certificate that they can use at any downtown business so they they can then leave the Radisson for dinner or however they want to leave, to to go down to the walking mall or go down and explore Bells or downtown Kalamazoo. But it would be a three thousand dollar appropriation coming from contingency that would then be used to highlight Kalamazoo and Kalamazoo County to visiting commissioners. I put this on late because it came up after our agenda setting meeting, but questions or concerns from commissioners? Commissioner Wheeler?
I don't have a question. I have a comment. I I sit with the Discover Kalamazoo Board and I know that they would love to do this themselves if they had the funds, but of course, they're operating on a, on a budget like the rest of us. So I think that this would be a great thing to get people into our community.
Other commissioner comments? It's a pretty low dollar amount, so. Kevin, do you have anything?
I guess, Chair, yeah. So we'll just need that motion from the floor and then we can make it happen, so.
Can we put it at the seven o'clock meeting? That way it's written appropriately. I've done that too many times for. Okay, Vice Chair Ray?
Just a quick question. Do we know how many commissioners are registered for the conference?
Yes, Vice Chair, so eight of nine. Oh. I apologize. There, there's a good excuse. It's, yeah.
I can get that answer in two seconds.
Yeah, I was like, I think they sent it to us. I'll I'll let the chair, Chair.
Okay, it's, I want to say it's like a hundred and a hundred and sixty six have registered so far. But they anticipate there'll be a few more. Here it is. Yep, a hundred and sixty eight, sorry. And then they anticipate another forty or fifty more. So there'll be over, a little over two hundred and twenty or so. Okay, any other items? There's no closed session? Okay, move to adjourn.
All right, I'm gonna call the Kalamazoo County September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three Regular Board to Order. Dear Lord, we pray in your name that you give us the wisdom and guidance to make the best decisions for all residents of Kalamazoo County. We ask that you give us the humility and wisdom so that we may work together as one and benefit and work in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, clerk, will you please take role?
Commissioner DeLu.
Here.
Commissioner Gisler.
Here.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Here.
Commissioner Mazur is absent. Commissioner Morales.
Present.
Vice Chair Ray.
Commissioner Strips.
Here.
Chair Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Here.
Eight present.
All right, and Commissioner Mazur called me and said she was not feeling well, so she is excused. Next up is Proclamations, the Chair knows of none. Next is Communications. Commissioner Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler, will you read the following communications?
Thank you, Chair. Communications that we have, the Scola County Resolution opposing the legislation preying local control for solar and wind developments. Number B, City of Galesburg Notice of personal master plan availability for review and commitment of public hearing. See the Scola County Resolution opposing SB two nine nine, SB three hundred, and HB four four seven nine, and HB four four eight zero.
Thank you. Chair knows of no other communications. Okay, next, approval of minutes. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the September fifth, two thousand twenty-three Draft Committee and of the whole and regular meeting minutes. It's been moved and supported, moved by Commissioner Morales, supported by Commissioner Wheeler. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion made by Commissioner and supported by Commissioner Morales. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, takes us into public comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the Board of Commissioners. Please give us your name, address, and you have up to three minutes. Seen no one approach the dais. Can we run through our phone calls? Yes, Chair, this evening we have nine calls.
This is John Burhans. I would like this message read at both the four o'clock and seven o'clock meetings. I reside in Portage at sixty-eight thirty-eight Isabel. I continue to oppose the YWCA reproductive fund as money from our tax dollars may go towards abortions and gender transitions, which I believe is totally wrong and should not happen. I've spoken in person and called in multiple times, want to state that I continue to oppose. Thanks.
I'm Jeanette Robinsky calling from Kalamazoo County. Please play this message at both the four PM and seven PM meetings of the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners on Tuesday, September nineteenth. As you move forward with the proposed twenty twenty-four budget and decide whether or not to modify it prior to its finalization, I would like to reiterate that I am deeply opposed to giving any money to the YWCA Reproductive Health Fund for the following reasons. First, life begins at conception. According to Dr. Stephen Christie, who is a physician, lawyer, and author, five thousand doctors at one thousand medical institutions were asked at what point life begins. A full ninety-six percent of them said that it begins at conception. Abortion deliberately kills those lives. As Sean Carney, President and CEO of the National Forty Days for Life Organization, points out, abortion is the only surgery where death is considered a success. Secondly, I am against artificial contraception for religious reasons. For those who want it, it's already available through the Kalamazoo County Department of Health Family Planning Program funded by Title ten dollars. For details, please see the Agenda packet for your meeting held on June twenty, item twenty twenty-three dash six two one four. There's no need to give the YWCA money to duplicate those services. Third, some proponents of gender affirming care say that it is comparable to menopausal women on hormone replacement therapy and comparable to women undergoing breast augmentation surgery. That's not a valid comparison for two reasons. First, those women are not trying to change their God-given birth gender. And secondly, they are not asking Kalamazoo County to foot the bill. Please do not give any money to the YWCA Reproductive Health Fund. Finally, please know that I am against the proposed property tax millage increase that you are going to discuss at the October third public hearing to support the twenty twenty-four budget. During the April eighteen meeting, you reported that the twenty twenty-three Kalamazoo County Equalization Report revealed that taxable value had increased six point eight percent. You already have extra tax revenue from that without having to raise the millage rate. Kindly stay within your means. Besides, the proposed twenty twenty-four budget is showing a surplus, so why do you need to increase the millage? If you want more of a cushion than you already have, then decrease your spending. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joyce Beatty. My husband and I live in the city of Kalamazoo, and we pay taxes. We do not want our tax money to go toward the willful killing of innocent human life, in other words, abortion. Our role as human beings in society is to nurture, protect, and affirm the dignity of every human being, not to willfully purposely end it when it seems inconvenient to someone. Nor do we want our tax money to go towards so-called gender-affirming care, which has proven to be very, very harmful to adolescents. Please replay this message at the four o'clock and the seven o'clock meetings, both on Tuesday, September nineteenth, and do not grant money toward Planned Parenthood or any other agency that would support these obnoxious decisions. Thanks. Bye.
Good afternoon. My name is Ann Cooper, and I live in Portage, Michigan. Please play my comments at both the four PM and seven PM Kalamazoo Board of Commissioners meetings on September nineteenth. Today, I am calling to again express to you my very strong opposition to funding the YWCA reproductive health grant request under consideration for the twenty twenty-four budget. If funded, this program will spend a hundred thousand of our taxpayer dollars to pay for abortions and gender-affirming care. I would like to again remind you that our Declaration of Independence, so very dear to all USA citizens, states that we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. They are all endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. The YWCA reproductive health grant opposes our Declaration of Independence as it does not support life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness for all Americans of all ages. I would like to share with you the following tragic report. A twenty-one-year-old woman named Luca Hein is now suing the University of Nebraska Medical Center for irreversibly harming her by rushing her into a double mastectomy at age sixteen to treat her gender dysphoria without exploring less radical or permanent options first. As a teenager, she suffered mental health issues. In just two visits, doctors at the University of Nebraska Gender Clinic convinced her to accept breast removal as the solution to her mental health issues. Her parents were misled and pressured to agree. Evidence shows that affirming gender confusion carries serious harms itself and that more than eighty percent of children who experience gender dysphoria outgrow it on their own by late adolescence. Did Luca Hein benefit from gender-affirming care at age sixteen? The answer is clearly no. She was permanently harmed. Here is another concern. It is now known that physicians are being influenced by the financial benefits they can gain by doing gender care surgeries. At Vanderbilt University, a physician at their transgender health clinic was quoted stating that these surgeries make money. A new Tennessee law that forced Vanderbilt to stop transitioning minors has been passed to prevent this abuse. Please, Kalamazoo Board of Commissioners, concentrate on your legitimate responsibilities in serving our county and fund the services that all citizens truly need. Do not fund the YWCA reproductive health fund grant. Do not use our dollars to support actions which lead to loss of life, mutilation, or chronic illness for our children and may ultimately be subjected to substantive claims of malpractice and litigation. I pray that you will carry out your responsibilities righteously for our county, our families, and our children. Thank you very much.
This is Florence Nelson calling. I'm a resident of Kalamazoo County. I have called in before, but I'm calling in again today to implore the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners not to grant the one hundred thousand dollar request by the YWCA reproductive health fund for that fund. I do not want my taxes to pay for abortion or transgender surgeries. I don't think it's right. It's a very controversial subject, as you know, and I just don't think that it is the right thing for the county board to do. I would also like to comment on something that occurred at last month's meeting, a comment that was made by one of the commissioners comparing gender-affirming care to hormone treatments taken by women and to breast augmentation surgery. First of all, none of those procedures is paid by the county's tax dollars. Second of all, hormone treatments or breast augmentation do not involve the death of a child or a woman becoming a man. Those comments are absolutely misinformation, and those are the types of things that people who are not totally aware of what's going on believe. And I take issue with comments like that being made, put forward as the truth, when indeed there is no comparison like the one that the commissioner made. Again, I thank you for your time, and I hope that you will seriously consider not granting that one hundred thousand dollars to the YWCA. Thank you. Goodbye.
Yes, my name's John Raskowski, nine five three seven Woodlawn Drive. I'm opposed to the spending of taxpayers' money, a hundred thousand dollars for abortion and gender-affirming care, a voluntary procedure that people are gonna do sex change. I am not willing to pay for that. I think that's really inappropriate. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Barbara A. C E R U., and I live in Kalamazoo County. I am calling because I would like my voice heard. I do not, I repeat, do not support any money being given to the YWCA for what they call reproductive health fund because I do not want my tax dollars to go for abortions or artificial contraception or gender-affirming care, which is all lies because very often, especially the last, it usurps patients' rights and does irrevocable damage to children. And so this is totally against, as a parent and a grandparent, what I believe in. So again, I repeat, I do not want my money going to the YWCA for those issues. Also, I want my comments made at the four PM and the seven PM meeting. Thank you.
Hello, excuse me, this is Victor Ceru. It's spelled C E R U. I live at fourteen fifteen Southern Avenue, and I am calling on regards to the funding for the YWCA reproductive health fund. And I am asking that you do not give And I am asking that you do not give this because the, our, some of this money will go for abortions and stuff like this that I object to. And so my, I am asking again that you do not fund this program for the YWCA. Thank you.
Yes, this is Gino, middle initial C, Brewster, B-I-R-E-W-S-T-E-R. And I am calling in opposition of the $100,000 Reproductive Health Fund, which goes to increase abortion and artificial contraception, gender-affirming care, and doula care. I am opposed to that. I don't want my tax dollars to be used for abortion, artificial contraception, gender-affirming care, or any doula care which supports these services. No tax money for hormone treatments or anything of birth gender to the opposite gender. And I am also must say, these doctors go to school for education to be, to help people. What do you do? You turn them into butchers and take, control people's lives, whether they live or they die. So I am opposed to that. Now, I'd like the message that I am giving you to be played at your 4:00 PM meeting and your 7:00 PM meeting. And I hope you're willing to voice my opinion, even though it is opposition to yours because no one should have to pay for other people to have an abortion, take lives away from other people. Thank you and goodbye.
All right, nobody's hands raised. Okay. This will take us through the consent agenda. We have a request for approval of resolution to set annual meeting dates and public hearing for proposed budget 2024. Request for review and approval of workforce development board renewal appointments, Michigan Works. Request for approval of amendment number two to the Administrator-and-Controller's Employment Agreement. Request for approval of appointments, Mike Alwine, Scott Paddock, and Randy Schmeling to the Village of Climax Construction Board of Appeals, as required by MCL 125.1514. A request for approval to accept funds from the Kalamazoo Community Foundation Drug Treatment Court Fund. Request for approval of positions creations, election specialists. Request for approval of position creations, election inspector, election inspector chairperson, and receiving board. Your finance recommendation for approval of accounts payable and payroll disbursements. Request for approval of auditing services contract with Reiman Robinson. Request for approval of various budget adjustments and transferring, housekeeping. Under Health and Community Services, we have a request for approval and signature of a purchase of service contract with A+ Nursing Staffing Incorporated. A request for approval of signature of a purchase of service contract with ADT LLC. Request for approval and signature of a purchase of service contract with Advantage Private Nursing Incorporated. Request for approval and signature of a purchase of service contract with American Response Technologies, Inc., DBA Medical Care Alert. Request for approval and signature of a purchase of service contract with Area-Wide Transportation Incorporated. A request for approval and signature of a purchase of service contract with Care &amp; Assist LLC, DBA Homejoy of Kalamazoo. Request for approval and signature of a purchase of service contract with Care &amp; Champions Kalamazoo. Request for approval and signature of a purchase of service contract with Community Living Options. Request for approval and signature of a purchase of service contract with Connect America LLC. Request for approval and signature of a purchase of service contract with Fresh Perspective Home Care. Request for approval and signature of a purchase of service contract with Guardian Medical Monitoring. Request for approval and signature of purchase of service contract with HSH Service, Senior Services LLC, DBA Home Suite Home &amp; Home Care. A request for approval and signature of a purchase of service contract with Mikla. And I just jumped out. Request for approval. What? Okay, request for approval of purchase of service contract with Community Living Options. Request for approval and signature of a purchase of service contract with Connect America LLC. Request for approval and signature of purchase of service contract with Fresh Perspective Home Care. Request for approval and signature of a purchase service contract with Guardian Medical Monitoring. Request for approval and signature of a purchase of service contract with HSH Senior Services LLC, Sweet Home &amp; Care. Request for approval and signature of a purchase of service contract with Mikla Group, Right at Home of Kalamazoo. Request for approval and signature of a purchase of service contract with PRC Holdings, Inc., DBA Arcadia Home Care and Staffing. Request for approval and signature of a purchase of service contract with Senior Services Incorporated, DBA Milestone Senior Services. Request for approval of signature of a purchase of service POS contract with Stay Home Companions. Request for approval and signature of a purchase of service contract with Vicksburg Family Home Care LLC. Request for approval and signature of a purchase of service contract with Valued Relationships, Inc. Request for approval and signature of a purchase of service contract with WMU Center for Disability Services. Request for approval and signature of an award contract with WMU Center for Disability Services from the senior millage year four budget. Request for approval of 1 MDHHS Emerging Threats Fiscal Year 23 Amendment Number Four and for health officer to electronically sign amendment on county's behalf with egrams. Request for approval of Emerging Threats Agreement and health officer to electronically sign agreement on county's behalf with egrams. Request for acceptance of MDHHS Fiscal Year 24 Comprehensive Agreement and health officer director to electronically sign agreement on county's behalf with an egrams. Request for approval of position eliminations and creations. Request for approval of three positions for the Child and Adolescent Health Center pending arrival of CAHC Grant Award under Human Resources. A request for approval of creation of temporary positions. Request for approval and signature on LOU ASME with the airport. Request for approval of Medicare Plus Blue Insurance Renewals under Information Technology. A request for approval and signature to extend the contract for professional services between the County of Kalamazoo and Precision Data Products. Under Sheriff, a request for approval and signature on a contract renewal with Aberax to provide records, retention, storage for the Kalamazoo County Sheriff's Office. A request for approval and signature on agreement with BarTech LLC and Kalamazoo County Sheriff's Office for Winscrib Hosted Dictation Services. Request for approval and signature on the intent to piggyback off cooperative procurement with Axon Enterprise Incorporated in Kalamazoo County on behalf of the Kalamazoo County Sheriff's Office. Request for approval of and signature on police protection agreements with Charter Township of Texas. Request budget adjustment for PA 416 Secondary Road Patrol Grant. Request for approval and of signature on amendments to contract for professional services between the County of Kalamazoo and MAO Pharmacy, Inc., DBA Westwood Pharmacy. Chair would propose entertaining motion that all items be voted on at once and considered by consent agenda by the board. It's been moved by Morales and supported by Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. Roll call, please.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gissler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray.
Yes.
Commissioner Strabs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Eight yes.
All right, unfinished business and general orders. The chair knows of none. Who wants to read the item 11 for Discover Kalamazoo? Commissioner Wheeler.
I move to authorize an appropriation of $3,000 from the county's contingency account pursuant to MCO 46.161 to Discover Kalamazoo's Downtown Dollars Program for advertising the tourist advantages to county officials attending the Michigan Association of Counties Conference downtown Kalamazoo scheduled October 1st through October 3rd.
There is a motion supported by Vice Chair Ray. Any discussion? Clerk Cox, will you please take roll?
Commissioner Gissler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strabs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Eight yes.
Okay, that takes us into public comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the Board of Commissioners. Please give us your name and address and you have up to three minutes. Seen none. Is there any additional phone calls? Okay, moving right. Reports of officers, bodies, administrators, controllers. I'll go first. When we had our budget retreat, oh gosh, it's been about two months ago. I said this is an opportunity for this board to have a real transformational budget. I think we got there. I think we got a huge, huge, huge step closer to today. Just, just think about the, the ability of what we are able to do now with restaffing a lot of our departments that had been, in my, my opinion, had been severely understaffed for quite some time. We took a long, hard look at our budget and we were able to today come up with, you know, an additional $400,000 to $500,000 by realistically anticipating our revenues. And Administrator Catlin and his staff will even add a little tiny bit to that beautiful budget that we had. The transformational projects that we did, we, you know, we stayed away from some of the more controversial ones. Hopefully, we get a lot less phone calls out of this. I don't anticipate in the near future. But we, you know, as a board, we, we decided that our priorities would be, you know, the Tri-share program, an opportunity to really tackle childcare costs from our employees, specifically our Alice-funded employees, Alice employees that struggling to make ends meet. And childcare is a huge, huge cost to everyday families. And what better way to tell employees, we value you and we value your service, than to provide an option for them to, to help offset a lot of those childcare costs? The medical debt relief, I'm also excited about that as well. I think that's really a transformational type piece in this budget. We have the opportunity to eliminate tens of millions of dollars in debt in our community. 38,000 people, I think Commissioner Sreb said. This is, I mean, this is why we sign up to run for office, really, to do these types of things. I said back in January that we will get much, much farther if we work as one. And we have, and we did. And where we've come in about two years or a year from now and where we are now and what we're being able to offer and serve to the community, I think it's something that we all should feel very, very proud of. So thank you guys very much. Vice Chair Ray.
Why do I have to go next? I agree with everything John just said. He said it very well. I'm just gonna say ditto. And then I want to note that one die is missing off the board. There's only 31 and there should be 32. So somebody did not get four deaths.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Thank you, Chair. I do want to applaud this board and its decision-making and agree with our chair that we're making monumental tasks in funding and county positions and departments that are providing the services to this community. And I want to encourage us to continue to work with our various departments and other elected officials to, to do the things we need to do for Kalamazoo County and make this a great place to live, work, and play. I have to reach out and one of my council members in the village of Augusta last week passed away. He had some heart surgery and was doing better than came home and went back to the hospital and passed away peacefully at the hospital. So I reached out to the Selfworth family and offered my condolences and our support. They were very active in our community and on our village council. Both of them are on our village council. But were. Val was working on an ice cream social for our fire department to raise some extra money for our fire department to make repairs to the fire station. She was more worried about that than she was the grief that was passed down there. Mr. Selfworth was a friend. He worked with us. He worked with me as a reserve officer years and years ago, was on ambulance services. So he served the community well and wanted to just respectfully thank him for all of his service for over the years. Again, we reach out to ask you all to keep in mind those folks that are out there daily, our military, our local police and fire, our ambulance folks, all of our county employees who work diligently every day to try to keep Kalamazoo a great place to live. That, thank you.
Commissioner Morales.
I'll pass. Have a good night.
Kevin, I am so sorry. I said I would never do that again and it's been a few months. But Administrator Catlin, if I didn't have Tammy here keeping me in check, I would have been messed up a few times.
But even when it comes to my time, Administrator.
Administrator Catlin.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Pro Tem Commissioners, community. First off, I do, I do want to express my condolences to the community of Augusta for the loss of a public servant. You know, it's, you know, as I reflect on that, it's, it's, it's hard to find really good public servants nowadays. And in kind of speaking on that note, we have excellent, right, public servants here in Kalamazoo County, especially on this board. I'm blessed in my, my job here that I get to work alongside with a phenomenal team that we've been able to build. This budget that's been presented over the last couple of weeks here, this, over a month here now, is really the culmination of, you know, phenomenal teamwork and collaboration between all of the departments, including the Board of Commissioners. So I just want to thank you for the work that you've done tonight. That's something that we have not done in the past, just getting through this process. And there's still more to come as we consider the revenues that we've been directed to kind of take a look at. So we'll, we'll come back with some additional recommendations. But really, we've come a long way and we have employees that are excited to come to work because of leadership here at the board level and, and the entire county government or leadership level. So thank you for that. I do have a couple of things, well, actually several, sort of several topics just to touch on that are of importance. The first one being department collaborative, department collaborative item that I wanted to share. So the Kalamazoo County Planning and Development Department and our Housing Department are teaming up with MSU Extension to offer a half-day training opportunity for community leaders, staff, developers, and real estate professionals. It's entitled Building a Foundation for Attainable Housing. It's October 20th, 8:30 AM to 11:30 AM at the Expo Center. And they'll be discussing a wide range of planning and regulatory tools to assist our communities with housing demands. There will also be a one-hour pre-training webinar available to all those who register. It's a free training and the registration will be available soon, so we'll get that sent out. But just for now, save the date for October 20th, 8:30 AM to 11:30 AM at the Expo Center. Touching on the opioid community needs assessment, so some exciting news to share on that. We've done the survey engagements and we want to share some info on that. As of the 13th of this month, we've received 952 responses. Of those, 58% identify as a person in recovery or active addiction. 30% identify with having a loved one in recovery or experiencing active addiction. And 12% as neither or, as neither above or general community member. So wanted to share that, those metrics. The survey is still available through the 22nd, so this week, this Friday. So you have until Friday to take it. And we're also establishing some focus groups and those are being scheduled the first week of October. Due to the overwhelming response that we received from the community survey, they're selecting a limited number from those that have participated in the survey to be in a focus group. Therefore, we are, though, have considered a community listening session for the entire community with Open MSU for Tuesday, October 10th, from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM at Mount Zion Baptist Church at 120 Robertson Street. So that should be a good forum to, to get those that can't be in a focus group to, to, to still hear them during that listening session. Some of the outreach efforts associated with the social media campaign, so to promote the survey, we're running that social media campaign through the 22nd. As of the 18th yesterday, we've reached 6,300 accounts who've at least viewed social media campaigns directly. campaigns directly. Some of the engagement metrics, three hundred and ninety-two of those have either clicked links like the post and or shared it. So that's good news there. In other news, we did, since the board via motion from the floor approved some addition or initial recommendations for spending some of the opioid dollars. We were able to hire a health educator for opioid response and hard reduction for that position, and they will be starting in early October. And so that that's all the news that we wanted to share on that. And then lastly, so October third will be the the budget public hearing. And so that date is the same day that I will actually be in Austin, Texas. Deputy Administrator Smith and I will be in Austin, Texas for the I C M A conference. So we'll be attending the board meeting on Zoom that day. But Deputy Administrator Cole will be here in in my stead physically to walk through the C I P process. So answer any questions on that, and then we'll be able to all entertain questions on the the total budget package. Speaking of the budget package, we are meeting with finance this Friday. We're about ninety-five percent there on the actual budget book, just kind of recognizing it's a new software. First of all, it's a new E R P. Software, and then we have a new budget book software. So they've had to build it literally from the ground up. It is basically done. Hopefully, we'll have an answer for the board Friday on when we'll have that released, but it'll definitely definitely be before October third. So that you all have an opportunity to review the entire budget book and that proposal, and we can discuss it on the third. And happy to take any questions. That's all I have this evening.
Questions from Commissioners? Vice Chair Ray.
Just one, can you send out the email about the the listening session at Milesheim?
Absolutely. So I believe we'll have some flyers that'll be developed for that, too, and we will definitely send out the information. Lastly, on the budget book, I did forget to mention Vice Chair Love this. We are printing that for the board as well, so we'll we'll get that for you.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Okay, now Commissioner Morales.
I lied about not having a comment. But it is Hispanic Heritage Month, and this Friday at the Delta Hotel, we have a I'm also a commissioner for the Hispanic Latino Commission of the State of Michigan, and we are having a banquet there, and I have some extra tickets. It starts at five P M. We have some exceptional leaders who are being recognized, not only in Kalamazoo County, but in all the counties throughout the state of Michigan. I'm not sure if the governor is gonna pop up, but we're hoping that she does. But that is this Friday at the Delta Hotel. I will, I got about four seats left, so if anybody on the board wants to, just let me know.
Commissioner Shrebs.
Thank you, Chair. So just some praises around to Administrator Catlin and the Administrative Executive Cabinet. I mean, you guys are just just rocking it. We're just so pleased. All the work in this budget process has been smooth and productive and really inspiring. I want to thank the constituents of this community for participating, for adding your voices, for allowing me to serve along with this board and working on issues that are important to you and lifting up your concerns and voices. I am grateful to be able to participate in that. Some praises to Chair Taylor for your leadership through this year. We've accomplished a lot. We have a lot to be proud of, and I thank you for your your leadership as we have traversed our way through that. I also forgot to thank earlier Vice Chair Ray and Gwendolyn Hooker for their work on the opioid task force resolution and the feedback to make that a holistic approach. And I think the last thank you I have is for Commissioner Wheeler, who was kind enough to let me bring my daughter Olive on her fifth birthday over the weekend to her fire station, check out the trucks and get a little hat. So Abby, you know, has been involved in the fire service since she was sixteen years old. She's a tremendous person. We're lucky to have her on our board as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Didn't know I was gonna cry this meeting. Just the same thing that Jen said and and everybody else. Thank you to this wonderful team for everything done. I've gone through budget processes that have been really, really tough. So this has been amazing. So thank you very much.
Commissioner DeLu. Yeah, a couple of things. I think we allocated some funds to some great programs tonight. But we wouldn't have had that opportunity if it wasn't for the work of Commissioner Strabs, Commissioner Morales, Vice Chair Ray, and Chair Taylor. I personally wouldn't have come up with these programs. I wouldn't have known where to look, and I can imagine some of the hours you all have spent. And so it's very much appreciated, and I think the community is going to benefit greatly. Secondly, I apologize. Now I will not be here, but thanks, meaning. And in discussing the budget, I just want to make sure we remember at our retreat, public safety was a huge part of it. So is my request that any money currently budgeted for the Sheriff's Department and the Prosecutor's Office not be cut? And hopefully, maybe even a little more can be found, because it's very competitive out there. When we were talking about the money going to the Sheriff's Department, as the sheriff alluded to, it's it's cutthroat out there. Come to hiring these these officers. Where I work, you can come in and get, when you talked about getting, starting at a higher rate, you can come in. We have lateral entry. It's a huge program benefiting tremendously, but not every department can afford to do that. So please leave what money they have in there, and if you can find it somewhere, give them more. That's my stance, and I'm sorry again, I won't be here because I know the budget's a big deal, and it's my first one, and it's very enjoyable, actually. I, for me, anyway, because you guys have all the input, and I just listened, so it makes it. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Gessler.
I can assure Dale that this is probably the best budget system that I've ever been a party to. And John, I salute you and Kevin and Tammy and Jeff for doing the duty. It's, we're gonna bring it in on time, and I think it's gonna make a lot more sense than it generally does. So thank you. I have three things I want to mention. One, the Vet Millage is coming up on November seven. And while I'm not generally a big believer in new miliages, excuse me, this one, we're we're so remiss that we haven't done this years ago, that I'll support it wholeheartedly and be happy to defend it to anybody that doesn't like the idea of another millage. There's going to be a senior expo. I put a sheet on each of your desks, a little flyer indicating that it's going to be at the Expo Center on the third of October from nine to three. And I think at last count, they didn't put it in here. I don't believe it. They already had a hundred and ten and counting vendors and service providers with tables, booths, whatever. So it should be quite an event. Don't miss that if you can. I don't know for a fact that there's going to be free senior transit on Metro Transit. But I think they've done that in the past few years. It just hasn't come up yet. So I'll I'll give Sean McBride a call and see if that's still still the way to go. And lastly, Fall Fest Flowers and Floats is going to be this Saturday at Merrill Park in Comstock. And hopefully, it'll be good weather. There's going to be all the usual stuff of bounce houses and that kind of thing. And the florists that are the big businesses in the Comstock Township are going to participate. So if you're looking to get a last boot in there or something like that, this may be a good chance to do it. And kids, I don't know what the cutoff is, but kids are going to get free ice cream floats, not just ice cream. I figured it was going to be just a little cup and a spoon. They're gonna make floats. That's part of the deal, I guess, floats. I always figure that's, you know, the things at the Rose Parade, but they're gonna make ice cream floats. So and that that's this Saturday, and it starts at noon and closes down at three. So hope for good weather, at least in the middle of the day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, we are adjourned.